You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is November 25th, 2024 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening and welcome to the La Porte County Council Regular Meeting for November 22nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. If we'd please stand for the pledge, silence your phones, stand for the pledge. Mr. Cunningham.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Florida stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Karanka.
Present.
Councilman Mullenour.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
And Councilman Novak.
Yes.
All seven here.
Approval of the November 25th Agenda.
Mr. President, I want to make the motion to approve with the following changes. Page 100 of Business, return all unused funds from Michigan City Courthouse Project to the Rainy Day Emergency Reserve Fund effective immediately, and also reversal of approval of $1.5 million of ARP funds for U.S. Highway 3594 infrastructure project, return to ARP funds under New Business. A trial support person to the Port County Prosecutor's request to hire. Also set a date for the Council ARP Funds Only December Meeting for December 5th, and La Porte County Council Reorganization Meeting Monday, January 6th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. On page 3, Port County Animal Control, add transfer $8,000 from Employee Training to Food Account, and also return $34,0568 to the LPC Animal Control Donation Account. On page 5, La Porte County Drug Free Partnership, add opioid restricted funds to the list of available funds as it was advertised as such. Move La Porte County Building Maintenance to the end of the agenda, and the La Porte County Council request shall be removed.
Motion by Mr. Karanka. Second by Mr. Yagowski. Any other questions or comments additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, September 9th budget. We're going to take a quick break.
Please pause everything.
We're back up. Motion to approve the, is there a motion to approve the September 9th, 2024 Budget Hearing Memorandum? I didn't finish what? Yeah, we did.
I thought we passed both.
All those in favor of the, I swear we did and we moved on because I started reading the next thing, but we'll vote on it again. Approval of the November 2025 Agenda as amended?
Aye.
Second.
Well, no.
Call for vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
You guys work with me just a little bit.
Okay. Next item, September 9th, 2024 Budget Hearing Memorandum.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next items, October 17th, 24, 24 Budget Amended Minutes, Adoption Minutes, I'm sorry.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. October 28th, 2024 Minutes.
We would ask to have delay approving these till next month. We did not, based on private discussion, complete these minutes.
Motion to table.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? October 28th, Joint Workshop.
Second.
By Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. President, if I may, sir, I'm also going to be passing out now the September 30th Minutes, which you approved at your last meeting with corrections from Councilman Rosenbaum for your signatures. There's no need for them to be on the agenda because they were previously approved. I'm just circulating them for your signatures. Thank you.
Public comment, public comment is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? One at a time. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody from the public? Going once, going twice. Moving on, Department Head Reports.
Carter Friedman, Judge Laporte Superior Court 4 and the La Porte County Problem Solving Court. I approached the Commission to see if I could ask for up to $600 for a Christmas party for the Problem Solving Court. This has been held over the last 10 years. Previously, we have been able to get donations. This year, we do have a fund Okay, we have a significant fund. There's at least $600 in there. So, the idea is that I will be covering the costs, getting the receipts, and submitting them for reimbursement if the Council approves.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka. This is just permission to do it?
Right there.
Yep.
The page with the available balances.
The money's already, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll expect that invite.
It's open.
Okay.
December's turn.
Any other Department Heads?
What else can I have on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Office of Economic Development, Planning and Government Affairs. I would seek a motion of support for two different grant opportunities. One for the Town of Wantata, related directly to improvements to water facilities, excuse me, sanitary facilities at their location. The idea is to assist the community with that. The Wantata Project would have a positive impact on the rate payers. The estimate provided would lower their rate case down by 14%, which is probably very welcome to the, those affected by that. That was for $500 out of previously allocated.
500?
I'm sorry, $500. Yeah, it's gone down. $500,000 funds for that project to be matched by the community. The second is Kingsford Heights. Again, it's a community that has supported themselves. The amount is 500,000. Funds would be used under ARP guidance for utilities. I would request a motion of support and then have the Council to make a final determination after meeting on the 5th, subject to the availability of funds.
Motion to approve, motion of support.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum for motion of support.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions going?
Yeah, Ms. Graves, can we get some clarification on the amount of money that was previously appropriated towards the $1.5 million project for Michigan City? Was that fully appropriated or was that a motion of support?
What I see in the paperwork, which was in, always is in your packet, 1.5 million in 2022 was a motion of support without a fund given, but then I think it's January or February, there is a 750,000 appropriation that has been encumbered. So, there is only $750,000 that has been appropriated to that project.
So, our paperwork that shows amounts available to spend is reflective of the, only the 750,000?
Correct. Yeah.
That's not, that's not the way I've understood everything you've been doing up to this date.
I've never given you anything that had that on there.
You said, something at one time said minus the motions of support.
It shows, but it shows the motions of support that it's including. Those are always...
So, in our packet, it has...
To see what they spent, the 750,000.
It isn't, it isn't spent. It isn't spent. That's why it's still available.
He's going to...
If I might, on August 22nd, Mr. Novak asked if the funds would be taken out of Economic Development Lit. Sorry. There was a motion to approve 750,000 out of Riverboat and 750,000 out of Economic Development Lit. Motion was made by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded, all the members voted. So, you did appropriate.
So, it never came out of ARP?
You did appropriate 1.5 million dollars.
But not out of ARP?
Correct. That's what this, this, the minutes reflect. So, the intent was for the request for 1.5 million was from the ARP at that time to follow the federal guidance. So, for utilities only. The project originally was 3594 area. The development that would be the matching funds for the bonds did not proceed. Therefore, there was no need to invest the 1.5 without the other $6 million plus or minus. So, the, these two projects emerged, and again, the motion of support is, you know, the subject to the availability of funding for these projects, as the Commission, as the Council knows, these are appropriate ARP dollars spent.
Which funds was that? Do you know? I'll look it up over sitting here. And do you know if it was encumbered?
You vote, well, I guess, taken out of, bear with me, the minutes reflect.
I know you said.
Mr. Novak asked if the funds should be taken out of Economic Development Lit or even split between Lit. Mr. Galloway confirmed that even though it was not on the agenda, the items had originally been under Economic Development 1, 1, 1, 2, and as such, the funds could be utilized. A motion to approve out of Riverboat, 1191, and out of Economic Development Lit was made and seconded, all the members voted. So, this was an appropriation.
And what date was that?
That was on the, that's on the, bear with me a second.
Because as long as it's encumbered, it would still be there? If not, it would have been December 31st.
But it's not out of ARP money, so it's not relevant to these projects, although we could use that money again.
Well, I'm just saying, there was 1.5 million appropriated by this Council for, for these projects, and that was done on August 22nd of 2022, so a little bit before.
But if it wasn't encumbered, the appropriation expires at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, it'd have to come back up and around? Yeah. The, the main point that I'm bringing up, and I'm not trying to throw any bombs on this project, I, I support it, but I want to make sure that we recognize that we're reducing the balance that we're looking at here for ARP by doing it.
It makes, I'm going to tell you, none of this makes sense.
Right. So, so here's the thing. If, if, if what she is saying is accurate, then, and I take Mr. Riordan for reading the minutes, it wouldn't come, this wouldn't come out of ARP money. This would come out of the same funds that it was in before because that money, we'd do something different.
There is 750,000 in ARP that was earmarked. It says I have 3594, just so you know. I made a copy, actually.
So, so we approved two, two, over $2 million for this project?
Not that I requested, sir.
How can there be 750,000 in ARP money, 750,000 from Economic Development Lit, and $750,000 from Riverboat?
I wasn't here in 2020.
On a million and a half dollar project.
I wasn't here then, so I don't know, sorry.
But you're saying that there's 750,000?
It's encumbered.
May I make a suggestion?
This is, this is just a motion of support.
I know that. Well, I mean, so the first thing is that we don't know if it was encumbered or not. So, we're going to have that ARP meeting, that ARP workshop coming up in the beginning, so we'll try to get it sorted out before then.
Question from Ms. Graves, the amounts available to spend, the, this paper that we get, would that 750,000 or the 1.5 million be reflected in those numbers?
Only the 750,000 because it was only motions of support, because it's already been entered into the check register. The only motions of support that are put into it are the ones that were requested for ARP. On that 1.5, if you look in your packet at your motions of support, there was no fund given for the 1.5. So, it is not in the...
So, our amounts available to spend report that we get only reflects motions of support where we specifically state a fund that's going to be paid out of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because I would know which one.
Mr. Yagowski.
I know that you weren't here, it's okay. But Mr. Stables, do you remember who called us? You were here.
No, I don't. Okay. Okay. I, I'd like to request a copy of all the reports that were filed with the federal government, the quarterly and annual reports that showed how much ARP money and what we used it for. And if that could be sent to all of us, then we'll maybe understand this a little better. That way, we'll know what money was used and what might still be
All right then.
So then, our motion before support, do we need to name a fund? Or are we just going to say that it's going to come out of economic lit or one of the others? I'm looking for guidance here because we didn't vote.
So, my recommendation would be to withdraw the initial motion. Let's take this up at the workshop to see.
Okay.
Really have that 750,000 to spend. And then, Matt, is there a, if, if we're going to be using economic lit, it's not necessary to get this encumbered or committed or obligated by the end of the year. So, I mean, is, is the burner, is the flashlight burning on us or what?
Only to the extent that the Council would choose to use ARP funding for this particular project, and it is in line with the use of ARP funding. So, I don't believe the communities would make any difference what account it came from, but the idea was to use this as ready, available funding for infrastructure, not to unnecessarily stretch county dollars to other areas.
But that was...
I, I think...
But what we're hearing is that, that 1.5 was not appropriated.
750,000 sounded like it was, but I agree that at the...
But if it wasn't encumbered, it's not there, correct?
The 7...
There's a good chance it's not there.
If ARP was encumbered.
So, I, I would recommend, like I said, subject to...
So, 750,000 for ARP was encumbered?
Yes, I said that. Yeah.
And you're sure of that?
This does raise a timeline question. So, Mr. Riordan said that this was originally approved with a motion of support in 2022, correct?
It was a, yeah, you appropriated it, so.
We were 2022.
Yeah.
So, to do the, to do the encumbrance would have meant that it would have needed to have been done back in 2022, right?
In 23.
Yeah, it does, I mean...
So, it's been encumbered multiple times?
It shows up in 24, 750,000. It shows up unused.
The ARP?
Yes.
And when might the meeting be with the ARP meeting? Okay. Great. So, between now and then, we'll have a chance to look through and...
I just, I just don't understand, back then, why we approved it, motion of support out of two funds and appropriated out of another one that...
Not sure.
Wasn't a motion of support.
I think your main to, just, you know, making sure that there would be available revenue that could be utilized immediately without returning any funds to the federal government would be kind of the goal, I think, unless there's other... Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Department Heads? Any other Department Heads? You're pointing at somebody. Who are you pointing at?
Heather Stevens.
Okay, Heather.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Due to a family medical issue, I am unable to be there tonight. I apologize. I really just need to, all of our election money is under one fund name, and I need to move that into different funds in order to get our workers and our polling locations
I did add it to the agenda, Heather, as well.
Oh, I didn't realize it had been added.
That's what I emailed you or texted you about to ask if that was okay.
Okay, that's fine. I can wait.
Thank you. Any other Department Heads? Any other Department Heads? Anybody else on Zoom? Hearing none. Moving on to Liaisons, Mr. Cunningham.
We have a six-page agenda this evening, so I would merely make one comment. In the audience tonight, we have Commissioner-elect Steve Holfield, who hardly ever misses a meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Yagowski.
Same, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
I also will yield.
Mr. Mullenour.
I'll yield.
It's in your packet as well.
Mr. Keel.
Same here.
Mr. Karanka.
Wave.
And I'll wave also. Correspondents?
We have none.
Old business. First item that we added is return the unused portion of the Michigan City Courthouse Project to the Rainy Day slash Emergency Reserve Fund.
Did you all pull the, that ordinance off of the...
Not on my agenda. She didn't, it's not it.
So am I.
Are you talking about the 2024-11? Yeah, he just started to go with this list rather than this. So, it's just down.
They're talking.
Wait, 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 what?
It's on, it's on the page.
You skipped the ordinances and resolutions.
This is, I printed the one you sent tonight. It's got the red, correct?
It's printed right on it, above old business.
Never mind, never mind. All right.
We're good now.
All right. They've got too many change orders on here. All right, let's go back to ordinances, shall we? Ordinances and Resolutions, Ordinance 2024-11.
President, motion to read by title only.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? By title only, please.
This is ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance establishing a non-reverting prison autopsy payment fund.
President, Mr. Yagowski, make a motion for 2024-11 ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
This is just first reading.
Rosenbaum.
First reading, first reading, sir.
Just first reading. Any questions or comments?
The question, I guess, can we bring this up at the next meeting or do we want to do it all tonight or?
You can bring it up the next meeting.
Technically, technically, it's been, it's already been stated that next month is just ARP funds, period. We're not doing anything else on the agenda at all, period.
You're going to take that in blood?
I'm going to take, I'm going to do my absolute best to make that happen.
30,000 times a year or something. We don't, we don't consider this being anything conventionally controversial. It's the establishment of a fund, so we respectfully recommend.
I can make a motion to, well, let's start over. Let's get a motion to suspend the rule.
That's what I just was going to do.
Thank you, sir. Zul.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
And second by Mr. Karanka to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
President, I can make a motion to adopt 2024-13 as read.
That's second by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments?
The question. So, we had told a couple meetings that there was excess funds in a fund that we haven't used for a couple years. How much money is in that fund? You caught, I just brought up last meeting.
What fund are you talking about?
The ordinance here.
The autopsy fund.
Yeah, she had, she does have $3,000 in it. The fund has been used, but it's had an excess of 3,000 since her, so it hasn't gone unused since excess.
Yeah.
But the question that I do have is in the ordinance, it's suggesting that the Council is going to put $10,000 into the fund, so that 3,000 could offset that. But do you want that to be in January is what my question is?
Well, that's what I was doing at the, asked this question. I like to make a motion that we transfer or however we fund, from fund to fund. We don't need...
It has to be appropriated first.
It's a transfer.
We'll take your objection.
It's not a transfer when it's fund, I mean, you...
From one fund to the other fund is a transfer.
You can, you can only transfer fund to fund if statute allows, and there's only like a couple that allow it with rainy day and things like that, so.
I predict we're going to get away from, from doing appropriations here in the near future. And so, just as a reminder, why does it serve us well to do appropriations instead of transferring between funds? Would I be correct in saying that when we do transfers, it's going to show up in our annual financial report as a receipt in two places instead of just one, and that that would mislead people into thinking more revenue was received in a fund in a given year than what is actually received in it?
It does show up weird and causes the numbers to be incorrect at the end. Like, I have to go through them individually to take out the transfers when there are some, but we haven't done any, not fund to fund transfers for a couple of years. But fund to fund transfers is because the state statute says it's not.
Thank you.
Any other questions? She's spinning around in her grave back there, and she's not even in the grave.
Any other questions on the ordinance, first reading? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're going to do our second reading now.
Mr. Yagowski, do your thing by title only.
I'd like to make a motion for adoption on title only for ordinance number 2024-11, second reading.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka.
Is that your boss?
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Yagowski.
That's it. I never read it the second time.
Oh, you want to read it second time now?
Is that, what was, is that a motion?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, great. An ordinance establishing a non-reverting prison autopsy, autopsy payment fund.
Mr. President, motion for 2024-11, read on second reading for adoption.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
So, it looks like, so it looks like you never, it wasn't published, so you appropriate it next year, right?
Yeah.
Then you'll be able to sort out the seven and...
We're going to...
Yeah. You know, we got a fire alarm, and then we got...
Great, Mad Max, that movie, that Mad Max, remember that?
I take a motion right now to just, let's just walk away from, I'm just...
Would you please shut that down? Just, just shut it down.
Turn the screen away.
Cut the beep for a second.
It's a screen on.
Oh, my God.
Got some cartoons, want to turn the screen around. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Log?
Turn everything off. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Welcome to county government, Steve. Welcome to county government.
That's a new one.
We're not even charging for that.
Not a meeting here, anyway.
So, we're back?
Yeah.
Great.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. So, so I believe we were at the returning the courthouse project funds.
Before we go over there.
Yes.
So, we just killed the Zoom link, and we've got a number of folks that are on the agenda. They're working via Zooms. Gene Hogan, suppose we have to hold them? We're going to have to hold their stuff until January?
Okay.
Or, or...
We can have them follow.
With Zooms to get them out. Heather Stevens, for sure. I thought she already got on.
We're, we're good. That's the only thing she's got. We're good.
Just want to make sure everybody's got, your car on your phone.
No, general, oh, general.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Excuse me, Auditor Stamos was bringing up, there is an ordinance for the Michigan City Courthouse Renovation Fund that I do believe says it goes back to the general, but it has to be approved by Commissioner Graham Rosa.
So, so here's the thing, the, the money was appropriated out of the Emergency Reserve.
Out of Rainy Day.
Back into Rainy Day.
The Michigan City general fund was, or the, are you talking about the La Porte one?
No.
Michigan City.
This is Michigan City we're talking about. Yeah, La Porte one, you're correct, but Michigan City wasn't.
I'll find the, there's an ordinance for it. I'll find it for it.
I don't know that we need a permission to defund that account, but the project's done.
Ms. Winsky, do you recall?
I think she's the one who told me about it, actually. That's how I found out.
I'd be surprised if I would agree.
I apologize for my earlier comments, Ms. Winsky. Good evening. Please state your name.
She was the one in the back. Joey Winsky, Treasurer of La Porte County, former project manager of the Michigan City Courthouse renovation. And if you'll recall, the Council said that they would give, I think it was 3.2 million dollars for the, it was for this software, not the computer side, the technical side. And if all of it was not used, it was supposed to go back to the Rainy Day Fund. I think that's what it's called now. And in January of four years ago, 2021, after I was taken off that project, I gave you a full report.
after I was taken off that project, I, um, gave you a full report. We, we finished early and we finished under budget. And I think there was either 1.9 or 1.2, I can't remember, it was 1. something that, um, you appropriated from the rainy day fund, and it was supposed to go back into that fund at that time. But I don't ever recall that it was put back into that fund. So that's, that's what it is. And nothing to do with the general fund. It was the rainy day fund.
Yep. So what's your pleasure?
I'll find it regardless for you, but just if you have it.
Make a motion, we'll take the action to revert the, the funds sitting in that, um, project fund back and bring it back to the rainy day fund.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krunka, second by Mr. Yagowski. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one was the reversal of the 1.5 million dollars in ARP money, but, uh, we'll hold that one over, so.
We don't need to motion the table, do we?
Nope, we're not doing anything on that. New business, consider approval of the president's authorization to hire replacement positions for La Porte County prosecutor, victim's advocate in a trial support. Also, La Porte County Community Corrections Field Officer, Highway Department Mechanic in the Clerk's Office, Deputy Clerk.
Motion to, uh, motion to allow the president to approve hiring replacements for items 1A through 1D.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krunka, second by Mr. Cunningham. Any questions? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. No presentation. You guys can talk if you want. Does anyone come on down?
Sure.
Yeah.
I did have a PowerPoint, but I think we'll just skip that one.
We are, we already said. Presentation.
That doesn't look the same.
Yeah, no. That was not mine.
Pretty impressive.
You had a person. Best view there.
Thank you.
My goodness.
I need therapy after that.
It's nothing.
Thank you.
Golly.
Um, so thank you for allowing me to present the update on the Propel US 30 West Corridor Study at your meeting. My name's Scott Sansford, I'm with CDM Smith, uh, we're the, I'm the consultant study manager, uh, working with INDOT on the project. So I'm basically gonna just brief you on, uh, the alternatives development process and screening process, particularly what we've done with Level 3. So the Propel studies together include 180 miles of US 30 and US 31 in northern Indiana. The Propel US 30 West Study is along US 30, um, from State Road 49 in Porter County to Beach Road in Marshall County, and then south along 31 to County Route 700 in Fulton County. So as part of the process, our study team has been engaging, uh, the public and study stakeholders for more than two years. And the feedback we've received is, and continues to be vital, uh, to the success of the study. And, uh, will guide the next 20-plus years of transportation investments in the corridor. So it's important to note, however, we do not anticipate the PEL studies will identify or recommend a single build alternative. The studies create a reasonable set of alternatives that could move forward as part of INDOT's regular call for projects, which is typically a five-year timeline. Uh, moving along. So you should see in their, uh, study schedule, um, so you can see we started back in 2022, and we're now nearing the finish line. We anticipate the PEL studies, uh, to be completed in early 2025. Right now, we're in that Level 3 analysis. There was two previous, um, phases of alternatives analysis as well, called the universal alternatives and Level 2. Each of those published reports and received public comment, which were, um, included in our, um, results that we have at this moment. So the Level 3 screening process was an eight-step process that started with defining planning segments, moving through, uh, defining improvement packages, and then evaluated those improvement packages to come up with a, a rating for each of them, a recommendation. And so I'll cover each step briefly. So, used to the digital version, but I'm glad I brought paper today. Uh, step one was to define the planning segments. So planning segments, you can just think of those as sections of roadway that function as a system to provide access and mobility within a geographic area. Uh, this approach helped the study team to analyze impacts that could happen upstream and downstream of single intersection. In Level 2, we looked at individual intersections. So Level 3 pieced those together. Um, in planning segments, there's 15 of them in our study area. They're named for the geographic region just to help locate. Um, so after we had the planning segments, the next step was to form the improvement packages. Um, improvement packages are a combination of intersection improvements and facility type, which together act as an alternative for the segment. So improvement package is essentially an alternative. Uh, multiple improvement packages were developed for each planning segment. I should also note the three planning segments in La Porte County, uh, we call it the Wanata Segment, Hannah, and then the Port, um, Stark County Line. So there's three portions of three segments. Uh, when forming the improvement packages, we looked at, uh, the influence of intersection concepts on adjacent intersections. So if we had an interchange, for instance, at one intersection, that would influence what we would do, um, at the adjacent intersections, potentially a closure or something, just to limit access near the interchange. Next consideration was access management principles. So this includes driveway improvements and recommendations on spacing of median openings. Um, improvements at secondary intersections. So in Level 2, we looked at primary intersections, which were the major collectors, the more, um, uh, heavily traveled roadways and above. So the secondary intersections then were also included in Level 3. Um, and in some cases, they were made right in, right out, or had directional openings, which limit, uh, the left, left turn and through movement on the minor road, but allow all of the movements. But also some secondary intersections also still allow full access or overpasses, things like that. Um, so facility type, uh, was a major consideration. Um, and as you can see on the chart, I'm not sure which page it is exactly in there, uh, but there's an illustration of the balance between mobility and access for the different facility types. And so as you, you allow full access, there's lower levels of mobility typically. So think a local street, a minor collector-type roadway. Uh, but as you get to the higher order roadways, like expressways and freeways, there's a higher degree of access to control, uh, which preserves that mobility. So to better align the corridor mobility and level of access with the US 30 corridor, it is necessary to apply some level of access management in conjunction with the intersection treatments. Um, within the study area, US 30 and 31 are currently classified as major arterials. So as shown in the graphic, a major arterial typically has more mobility and less access than other facility types. Um, in the, the study, there are over 150 driveways with direct access to US 30, many of which do not meet INDOT's current access management guidelines. So while these driveways are important for access, they can impact safety and operations. Uh, the challenge is to provide safety improvements, which sometimes reduce or eliminate the access, but also still provide adequate access across and to US 30 and 31. So now that we have the improvement packages, we started to evaluate those. Uh, they were evaluated in a number of ways. Safety mobility, which includes access in this case, are the main transportation needs for the corridor and were evaluated. Uh, the safety performance of each improvement package was determined through a multi-step process that started with identification of conflict points. Conflict points represent locations where vehicle paths intersect at driveways, intersections, and interchanges. Um, reductions in conflicts points are typically associated with improvements in safety, as fewer conflict points typically result in fewer locations where crashes can occur. Uh, mobility analysis looked at travel time along US 30 and 31, access and crossing points in the sense of how much distance between each would be present in a package, changes in cross-corridor mobility as it relates to the distance between crossing points, and also driveway impacts. Uh, we refined conceptual designs and planning level estimates. The costs are presented as a range in the report, uh, due to the planning level nature of the study. Uh, these costs will likely change as more detail becomes available. However, the cost estimates do provide a useful way to relatively compare the improvement packages in this planning study. Each package was analyzed against known environmental constraints as well. These impacts presented are preliminary and reflect the planning level nature. Other impacts were also considered like railroads, especially, um, along US 30 and the western portion of the study area parallels, uh, US 30. We also had study goals that were developed early on based on public feedback at the purpose and need stage, and these were also evaluated for all the packages. And the study goals included economic development, equity in transportation, multimodal access and connections, emerging technologies, fiscal and environmental practicality, corridor character, and local access. So after we completed the analysis, we finally were able to, uh, put a rating to each of the packages. So some packages were eliminated. This meant the package met the purpose and need established with the study. However, it is, is considered unreasonable when compared to other packages due to limited benefits. Um, it likely does not warrant consideration as part of any future subsequent NEPA studies in the planning segment. Some improvement packages were carried forward. This meant the approved package met the purpose and need. Uh, however, in comparison to others, the approved package, it has marginal benefits. In some cases, it may also have higher impacts and or costs. But it will be, continue to be considered in future studies and requires further analysis to determine if it's a reasonable solution. Finally, some packages were recommended. So packages that were recommended meet the purpose and need and are considered reasonable. Recommended packages are considered among the best within a planning segment at addressing the identified needs with limited impacts and without extraordinarily high costs. These packages likely warrant consideration as part of any subsequent studies or projects in the planning segment. So at this time, no decisions have been made about the future of US 30 or 31 in Propel US 30 West Study Area, and no projects related to the PEL study have been funded by INDOT. A stated goal of the PEL study is the identification of a range of reasonable alternatives. Given the needs identified within the study area, a reasonable alternative could consist of a single intersection improvement, a series of intersection improvements, or the roadways in between them. Uh, depending on multiple factors, including statewide priorities and funding availability, improvements considered as part of this PEL study could be combined in different ways in the future to address the identified transportation needs. So it's possible improvement packages could be mixed and matched across planning segments in the future as more information is available. Uh, there's an example in here, uh, for the Wanata Planning Segment. Um, and this one essentially extends from the, uh, Porter County Line to County Route 700 in La Porte County. And there's six, uh, improvement packages shown here as well as a no-build option. So in the no-build, that's shown at the top of that first slide there, um, this segment includes stop control intersections and existence of traffic signal at US 421 in Wanata. And essentially, the no-build means everything will be left as is. And this option is, is at least carried forward in all of the planning segments, and it is, exists in all segments. After that, the improvement packages range from minimal access control with lower mobility type options, so sticking with kind of the arterial look of what it is now, um, all the way up to more limited access freeway free-flow conditions. Um, each, each thing is labeled, and, um, obviously, there's many other, uh, packages. One thing I did want to point out, though, on Package 4, Expressway Light. So this particular facility type was developed in direct response to public comments. Uh, residents, business, and other local stakeholders requested improved mobility through reduction or elimination of traffic signals without sacrificing the access that they're getting from driveways. Um, so after consideration of these comments, INDOT developed the Expressway Light Facility Type to combine the driveway access aspects of an arterial facility with the increased access management of an expressway. So unlike an expressway, the Expressway Light Facility would allow right-in, right-out driveway access. It would also include properly designed median U-turn openings at select locations to reduce how far drivers uh, may have to go before they're able to turn around if they're stuck. Uh, there's also, there's a video, but we're not gonna show that, obviously. All of this information is online at propelus30.com. We have a video for each of the packages that's carried forward or recommended, and I think it really helps explain. You can see it's a flyover showing the conceptual design in each location for each package. It's much easier to understand, especially, uh, for the public, so encourage you to look at that. Uh, and as, just as a final note, uh, we have been out in the study area. We had a public meeting in Wanata. We also had office hours there on November 19th. Uh, we'll be in Valparaiso and Bourbon in December. Um, and then the report's also, um, in, uh, La Porte County, it is at the Wanata Library and the, uh, Hannah, in Hannah, it's library. So the report is there. If people don't have internet access or would rather thumb through it, it's all there for people to look at. And then, as I said, online, propelus30.com has all the information. You would want the report, the videos. Uh, it has also a recording of our public, our virtual, uh, public meeting, which is essentially the same presentation I gave you, but a little bit longer. Um, and we are accepting public comments as far as the Level 3 report is concerned through December 13th. So we encourage you and your constituents to review and comment. Is there any questions?
Mr. Yagowski.
Not really a question, um, because some of the constituents voted, even if they don't live there, they travel the roads. So could you make that accessible to Michigan City and the Port Libraries also?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we all, the county paid as a whole for it.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to thank you guys for being as thorough as you have been with this, this study. I've been following this since 2017, and, um, it's a very slow process, but it's been definitely very thorough. Um, I read through the, the 200-page report for the US 30 West, and, uh, I summarized some of my thoughts on it. Um, I want to emphasize that I think eliminating access completely through a limited access alternative that completely bypassed Hannah or, uh, eliminated access to State Route 39 would be wildly unpopular and just completely reckless to those communities. Um, J-turns have been pretty roundly not well-received.
Understood, yeah.
I noticed the railroad tracks in Hannah, which have been the, uh, source of several rear-end collisions. I think some have even involved school buses in the past. Uh, wasn't really mentioned in this, um, and probably needs some, some more attention.
Yeah, if I may respond to that.
Cool, of course.
We did, uh, include, it's not, you're right, we probably should, we need to write something in the report about it, but we did include improvements at grade at the railroad. We added an extra lane essentially, so for school buses or other vehicles that need to stop the railroad, they can pull off, and then with an acceleration lane to speed back up and merge in. So it is included in the, um, conceptual design, but it's, yeah, it's not clear now.
That makes good sense.
Thank you.
Uh, roundabout in Wanata, 421 and 30, probably not gonna fly, though I like the idea for drawing people into the meetings. It'll get them talking. And, and I want to encourage you to, to make a special meeting with, uh, Wanata Town Council. I mean, of all of the communities along US 30, they probably stand to be the most impacted. It's going to, if they get bypassed, it will transform the identity of their town. And I would encourage you guys to sit down with them specifically and really talk through what the impacts are for them.
Absolutely, thank you. We do have a, a meeting scheduled at their town council like this, but we've had, um, separate discussions as well along the way.
Excellent.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we, we purposely did have our office hours there, and we had 19 people show up from the town, which is a pretty good amount of people, plus the public meeting, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you very much.
Next item, adjustment recommendations. Joey Winsky, Treasurer. Did you get one of these?
Good evening. As you know, we had, we were mandated by the State Board of Accounts to perform a, um, go back and perform reconciliation to the banks. Yeah, we, they mandated us to go from 2019 through present day. We are finished, except with present day, which we're, we're basically, um, where we should be. We're on time. So, in, in 2009, uh, and, and maybe even before that, when the reconciliations were done, they were done manually. And consequently, um, there were many items that were not fitting into the reconciliation. The treasurer at that time, the, the people that did the, that, um, reconciliation at that time could not, there were several items that couldn't be plugged into the right categories, I guess. So one of the codices of doing this, uh, reconciliation and, uh, the cash book that goes with it, and this was mandated also by the State Board of Accounts, was that when we got to the end of 2023, adjustments that couldn't be found, and there were, um, I think I sent all of them to you in emails. And, um, they were listed on the right side of the ledger. That was, again, done manually. And so, um, all of those adjustments need to be removed at this time, so we can move forward on 2024 with a clean slate. So I sent you the, um, the, all of the adjustments that had to be made. In Bank 1, there was a negative $655.27. Bank 5 was some, a negative $75,087.43. And Bank 6 was a positive $27,699.03 for, excuse me, for a total of $48,043.67. So at this point, I would ask, um, the council to, um, remove this $48,043.67 from our, um, I guess, the, our ledgers. And, um, so that we can adjust the, uh, banks correctly. I think I said that right. I don't know if I did or not.
Mr. Yagowski.
Mrs. Winsky, I, like, the first one that comes up, $650, it makes a lot of sense. You could have a small numbers go back and forth, but for the large amount, how, how does that add up to, to just not fitting a category?
Well, it's, it's several things that we're in. Well, it's several things that were in, it was Bank Six that you're talking about, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so here are, and I'm sorry I didn't make you another copy, but these are all, these are all the adjustments that have to be made. For instance...
I get that, but it's not really my question, so...
Okay, well, but let me tell you. So, for instance, there was a $20 check, and it's checked, we have the check number on there, that for some reason, when we do the reconciliation, it's a joint effort between the auditor and the treasurer, who work together on this, and for some reason, we could not find where this $20 was.
Yeah, that part.
They looked at the, on their side, we looked on our side. So, the Board of Accounts told us, you have to go to the council, and you have to ask them at the end of this to remove those numbers.
Okay, great, that's not really what I asked, so, let me try again. So, again, that one, $650, those are small number transfers, I can understand that, but the large amount, how could we have that many errors going in different categories for that amount?
Well, I wish I could say exactly why that was, but these are from 2019 and 2020, when I wasn't in the Treasurer's office. So, I don't know, it could have been, I don't know, maybe a check that we received, and it wasn't posted correctly, or, let's see if I can, here's an electronic transfer that came from the insurance company, UMR. It might have been put in a different place, but neither office could find this, so we worked closely with the Board of Accounts on every single one of these.
What is the Board of Accounts area is like, I don't know how, okay, if I'm in an office like myself for 20 years, and I did something, why don't they call these people in and ask these questions to them? I mean, you're going to ask the volunteer, say, would you have to know?
You mean the person that wrote the check, or what?
The person that's in charge at the time.
Well, they get written up.
They're not here anymore. They were not elected.
Right, right.
Why, this is just a question for you. Why don't we call in those people? Because they worked for us, they got paid from the county for doing their job. Why don't we ask them people?
Why bother? We've never prosecuted anybody who's broken any rules with them.
This is not, this is nothing...
We have prosecuted people that...
We have prosecuted people.
Probably been a long time.
You all are jumping or making it a crime. I'm not doing anything, I'm not answering questions.
No, 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 prosecution is crime. All you're saying is, why didn't people answer as to what happened?
Correct, that's what my question is, exactly. I'm not saying you have to answer.
The Board of Accounts does ask every single year.
They call people that no longer are in that office, and they ask questions about it? I would have a question.
In this case...
They called past Treasurer.
In this case, they did call some of the past employees to ask for help, but nobody remembers why they put this $20 over here. They just put it in, I mean, you're talking about what, 20-some years ago?
Okay.
So, and...
Mr. Yagowski, this is stuff that's been sitting on the books for years. All they're doing is asking for an adjustment.
I get, I get, but that's still not my question, I get it, so it's okay. I believe that we should call people that were in that office at least and try to find it out, but that's...
Why? For what years? Make a motion, and then, Joey, we can call them before and see if they come before the council.
The question I have, if it's okay, is, I know on the UMR stuff that you mentioned from 20, at least from 2020, 21, 22, 23, and 24, we did the research in our office for it, where it just hadn't been posted yet. So, I know the state said those things do need to be added to the ledger. These do not include anything like that, do they?
No, no. Every single entry that your office found, we brought down to our office and posted it.
What do you mean by posted? It hasn't been posted yet in the adjustments, at least, is that what, so we still have to do that on our end?
Well, I think these years are closed now, so the Board of Accounts will not allow us to do anymore.
Laos, Laos the one who sent an email saying they're going to meet with us to do the adjustments, so...
For 2023.
Oh, well, then, it's missing millions from 22, 23.
No, there's not millions, there's only $48,000.
What we found, though, for Bank Six was a lot.
Listen to what the Treasurer has to say. We're not going to sit here and argue.
I have stacks for what we have, I have a report, so...
Okay, the years of 2019, 2020, 2021, and 22 are now closed. This is from those years. The Board of Accounts will not reopen those years. When you're talking about a budget of $39 to $43 million, $48,000, and, you know, none of us think of it this way, but to the Board of Accounts, that's small change. You're thinking, you know, you're looking at the budget of $43 million, and you got 48,000, and this is from multiple years, so...
And is there corrective action where the reconciliation is being done better?
Yes.
And more accurate now?
Well, yes. In my office, it's all done on the computer now. Instead of doing it manually, we do it all through our software system, Laos.
Some of these go all the way back to 2009?
And farther. So, and just let me say this, is that one of the reasons we want this adjustment or we need this adjustment is so we can move forward on 2024 with a clean slate. This is not an unusual thing for a county to do.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion to make the adjustment.
I'll second by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagowski. More discussion?
Yes, a question. So, to clarify, we're coming up $48,000 short in one of these, and each of these were short, correct?
No, some of them were over, some of them were short.
Which ones were over, which ones were short?
Bank, Bank One and Bank Five were both over, and Bank Six is short.
Okay, I was recently told that there were instances where individuals had been issued a check, they then needed to uncheck, re-issued, and then they ended up cashing both twice, and they weren't...
That would be the auditor, not the Treasurer.
Not the Treasurer's office.
No, that's the Auditor's office.
No, it wasn't reissued twice, that isn't true. It was a check that cleared twice, but because the Treasurer's office didn't reconcile, they didn't catch them. And so, when it was presented at the meeting where Tammy White and them were at on Zoom, they said that errors like that cannot be written off, they have to be recouped. So, it's actually one check was written, it was allowed to clear twice, but the Treasurer's office never got with the bank when they saw the statements to ask, so it was like...
Is that relevant to what we're doing right here?
No.
All right, let's focus on what we're doing, because we got to...
But how do we know what of those include? That's what my concern is, is maybe...
We can have a conversation with them.
You've been with the State Board of Accounts and everything's with that. So, please do not speak to my chief deputy that way, sir. Please do not speak to my chief deputy that way, sir. Please do not speak to my chief deputy that way, Councilman.
Stop.
Not going to happen.
I'll control the meeting, just, let's focus on what we're doing here before us.
We have not received...
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
If I may, sir?
No.
We have not received a copy of these at all in the Auditor's office.
Then you need to ask for it. This is something directed at us. This isn't your reconciliation, this is us to do this.
We make the entry, we're a essential collaborator, we were not provided, I would recommend tabling it.
I can't move forward if you table it.
Change my motion.
Just telling you that.
What's your motion?
He's not changing it, is it okay?
Oh, you're not changing?
I changed my motion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay. Please do a roll call vote.
One vote, we're going to, okay, call, he called for it, call it. Make sure your lips move, everybody. Just saying. Don't look at me like that.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Carraca.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Nay.
And Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Fix eyes, one, nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our reorgan, ARP meeting that we're having on December 5th at 5:00 PM. Just want to make sure that that works for everybody up here.
Yep.
5:00 PM?
Five or six. 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM.
Sounds fine.
Next item is our reorganizational meeting. It was asked to put that on for January 6th.
What do you tell him, Mr. President?
6 o'clock?
Or 5 o'clock? 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
This one, February's okay with it.
Yeah, there's nothing else on that day, I don't think.
He was being abused.
5:00 PM. Are those both good? Can I get a motion to approve those two?
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Carraca, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item...
Is that when at 5:00 PM also then?
Yeah. Thank you. Next item is the La Porte County Election Board requesting a transfer from funds. It says $9,000. These two numbers add up to $8,000.
Well, that's not right. So, we have like $63,000, but it's all, it's all in one fund, but I need to pay, I need to pay $40,000 in workers, I need to pay...
Carrie said the workers' money was being paid out of the 100 account, so that didn't need to be transferred?
So, let me tell you what we have before us, Heather. We have La Porte County Election Board, meals and precinct boards, $3,500, and poll places for $4,500. That is all we have.
Yeah. The rest...
Rhonda, do you have that email that I sent to you in front of you?
I don't have access to my emails, no.
Okay.
But when I talked with Carrie, I know 8899 didn't need to be done? No, you didn't get it.
Could you say that? I'm so tired, I'm having a hard time hearing you guys.
Yep, the bottom of it, the 8899 requests?
She can't hear that.
Those don't need to be transferred, because that doesn't need Council approval.
Let's do that, we can't, can we do this, Heather, without, because I don't think she can hear you, she's on the phone.
Oh, right.
So, so, yeah, I'm sorry.
We got to turn her off.
But here's the thing, we're going to approve these, and if we need to do more, do something else. I think Rhonda believes that the rest did not need to be a formal action of the council, so...
If Rhonda's good with that, I'm good. I just want to be able to pay all of our election expenses and get it over with.
Does she have anything?
We have the funds.
Those two?
It just happens to be grouped into one fund.
Ask her that.
All right, Heather, just one quick question, it's coming from Rhonda. Do you have any other expenses besides these two?
The meals?
The meals and the polling places.
And then payroll.
And then payroll.
Yeah, we still have, well, yeah, the meals, the polling places, the payroll. There could be a couple of smaller expenses, but we also have...
Those were included.
...an office supply account, and if you give me just a second, I should be able to tell you how much is in that one.
$200.
Okay, so what I have is I have a total of $63,000 plus. I need $3,500 for meals, for the precinct boards, approximately $4,500 for polling places, approximately $40,000 for the poll workers. We also have available $18,265 in our election supply, and we do have some POs that have been turned in, so that's going to lower that amount a little bit.
But you're, right now, you're in surplus of funds versus costs right now, so...
Yeah.
Tell her the payroll doesn't need to be transferred, she's good with that, so it is just those two things that is...
Motion to approve the sums of $3,500 and $4,500, which is $8,000.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carraca. Any questions or comments? If you need more after, is she still on there?
Yes, she should be.
If you need something else after that, we'll figure it out. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is La Porte County.
Heather.
Community Corrections. Requesting transfer of lit public safety lease agreement. Field officers pay an amount of $1,291.44.
Motion to approve, asked President.
Do you want to do both together?
Motion by Mr. Cunningham. What's that? Who did the second?
He asked if he wanted to do both together, is what I asked.
I just asked if he wanted to do both together.
Okay, you want to do them both together?
Motion to approve both requests for transfers.
I'll second.
For county community corrections, a grant total of about $4,900.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Excuse me. Next item is request transfer from general fund for mileage to office supplies for MS4 an amount of $500.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Carraca, second by Mr. Cunningham. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is La Porte County Highway Request to Transfer Lit Economic Development, $134,677. Do you want to go through these?
Well, I wanted to ask permission to purchase a mower with the funds that we have in our lit budget, and then those are the transfers to make that happen. We did get insurance reimbursement of $34,910.
Is this the mower that burned up?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President.
So, that's the third item. So, real quick, so, the mower that you, is it a special price, or what?
So, it's the same price as the two that we had earlier this year that we purchased. If we got it in before December, it's the same price. So, this is an additional mower that burned up in September, so we're adding...
And I was just wondering if, so it's found the original price that we had with the other mowers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's on the QPA.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Originals were. And so, it totals $169,587.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just do that all, this all at one time, so we can do the transfer of the $134,677, and then she's requesting to be, to have the insurance money appropriated in the amount of $34,910, and then she's requesting to then be able to use that money to make the capital purchase.
Correct.
Of $169,587, which is the combination of the two numbers I just read. What's your pleasure?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Carrac.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting transfer from lit economic development, and just so, the highway budget, so every year, the highway gets $5 million out of lit economic development. So, I don't want anybody to think that this is coming out of the remaining amount.
Yeah, this is leftover money, like, for the year that we've been saving to purchase these things.
Right, so it's, this is requesting $282,45.4 plus $644,871.96, which totals $926,917 for the purchase of the trucks.
The trucks from 2020, February 2023. Now, this is just the chassis, that should be hit in the ground here in December, and then the remaining leftovers, the outfit, then will come out of our budget next year for our lit money.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Pres, Mr. President, motion to approve the transfers from other supplies and other services and charges totaling nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And included with that, permission to spend the nine twenty-six, nine seventeen for capital purchase.
Thanks. Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is a request and transfer lit, lit economic development highway, other supplies and charges in the amount of one hundred and four thousand. And then if you look at the next item, they're transferring, and then it's request permission to spend lit economic development highway funds for other service charges, the concrete approach and I beam repair in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, nine dollars.
Yeah, for the shop beams in the garage. If you bend out to the highway, I've probably shown you how bad the beams are. That's to fix that.
To support.
Support beams.
You think they need to be fixed?
Oh, I think so. So one of the shop is still standing.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? So I'd like to get a motion on both of those if we could, cuz they're both relevant, so.
Why don't I go for three? Mr. President, motion to approve the request for transfer from lit economic development highway budget, other supplies to other services and charges for totaling one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred, paired with the request permission to spend from the lit economic development budget for highway department, uh, other services and charges, again, one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred.
Motion by Mr. Karanka. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? If you haven't seen these steel structures, don't picture this. It's a steel pole barn free-span building. And where the steel beams, for lack of a better term, come in and hit the concrete, they're rusted off.
Rusted off.
So, uh, you can see a lot of daylight through them.
To that point, is there something different that they're going to have? Is there a lift of concrete?
They are going to, um, we put onto those and then replace the concrete at the bottom. So they're gonna add to the concrete, I mean, to the beam.
Right, reinforce the beams and, yeah.
Redo the concrete at the bottom.
Okay, all right.
I, as I got a tour of the highway garage sometime back, and I noticed that damage, and it made me wonder, um, what type of maintenance and repairs budget do you guys have?
We just use all the, the money that we get in our budget, so depending on what we need, um, we have our M V H money as our operating budget. Um, there's a, like an improvement for the grounds fund in there, and, you know, that's why we use most of our majority for the building out of.
Thank you.
I, I got a question. I toured it also. It's been a while, but wasn't there something discussed about the drainage too? That there's gonna be something with, uh.
Water was sitting along that edge or?
Then they were planning on putting, uh, a new drain system in right by the doors and that, where these beams are located?
Pit coming out of there? Wasn't there something?
Oh, that Hannah, at the Hannah shop?
No, this is at the Lepore one.
And.
I don't remember anything about the drains.
Biggest thing here is you've got open I beams at ground level, and you've got salt trucks coming in there regularly, and it's just catching in the pockets of the open H beam.
Right.
Yeah, I don't remember anything about the drainage.
Whoever gave me the tour, I can't remember. They discussed that, so maybe that wasn't feasible.
On the outside, on the outside, not the inside.
On the outside, yeah.
I mean, we had I D M come and do an inspection for all of our, so our, so water, stormwater runoff, but we didn't have, I don't think we had a drainage problem that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Lepore County Planner and Highway Department. Additional appropriation from lit economic development, uh, for the grant match of thirty-two thousand dollars.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
And you?
Great. So before you tonight, uh, basically is a scope change, um, somewhat in our Lincoln Trail project. The original routing was to go, um, on the west side of Otis Road, um, north of, uh, two hundred south, and go northernly, and then turn easterly, um, to connect to four twenty-one, the southern, the southern entrance in the P N W. But there was a large ravine. We had to get through there, um, and it would be very costly, plus it was majority wetland. So this, this is basically a change of scope where it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars total. We would go further north, go around, go up, there's a Remington Creek, then we would go north of that and go westerly there along Kessling's property, and connect to the northern entrance, pretty north, north central, uh, northwest, I'm sorry. Total cost to be a hundred and sixty thousand. I was able to get a hundred and twenty-eight thousand of that covered, so the local match will be thirty-two thousand. That's why I'm here for you, before you tonight. The, um, construction letting for the entire project, which would be roughly three point four miles of additional trail that would connect to Bloom and the, uh, Lincoln Trail, currently on three hundred, three fifty south, uh, behind New Durham Estates. That letting would go in June of twenty twenty-six with this.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve out of lit economic development.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum for lit economic development.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One nay or two, please.
Thank you. I vote aye.
I did.
Oh, case of cattle. Next item is Lepore County Park Department and County Planner. Uh, request additional appropriation, grant match, energy reimbursement grant, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty. This for the solar panel?
Yeah, Jeremy and I came before the board. I'd be last month. We discussed that and said we'd be back this month for the official appropriation. This is a hundred percent reimbursable. Uh, I believe it's forty-two solar panels on Red Mill, inverter, and all the labor associated. Um, it's a hundred percent grant match, but we need the money upfront, so that's why I'm, Jeremy was supposed to be here, but he couldn't, so he apologizes.
Motion to approve out of lit economic development.
Motion by Mr. Karanka from Lit Economic Development. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thanks.
I got one nay.
One.
Next item, voter register. Do you wanna take this one too, Mitch? Okay, all right. Next item is Lepore County Voter Registration Requesting to Transfer From General Fund Office Supplies to Part-Time Employment Amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski. Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions on this transfer? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Circuit Court Requesting to Transfer of General Fund Bailiff to Professional Services in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second by, motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Did you have a question?
Congratulations on your impending retirement.
Thank you, but that doesn't cure the problem. I sat before you last time and told you I would be back before the end of the year to get enough money to pay for the translators and the psych exams. And to my knowledge, on October thirtieth, we requested additional appropriations to do that, along with some transfers, to pay them all. It's not on your agenda.
That's the one I sent to you, Randy, yes.
So are you meeting again before the end of the year? I mean, the, these are expenses that we're obligated to do and obligated to pay. I suppose you can be late payers if you wanna do it in January, but then that, you're gonna.
We'll take, we'll take that up. We're meeting on January, on December fifth. We know that for sure.
Okay.
So if we need to take up, we.
And, and usually we just transfer money whenever we run, that we've. Transferred all we can. We were down to pennies. You know, I, I like to run lean and, uh, never ask you guys for.
So we still, we do have the transfer from the general fund legal intern to professional services to pay for the court reporting services in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars?
Right, we had a trial, and we didn't have court reports. We had to hire.
Right, so we do have that one. That's the next item on our agenda.
Okay, Judge, to clarify, you're asking for an additional appropriation or a transfer to resolve this?
No, that, we had both. We had, we were transferring money in, but that wasn't gonna be enough to pay for, and so we had additional appropriations.
They have two additional appropriations.
The email went, did it go out to everybody?
It did not. I only sent it to you.
President, motion to approve the twenty-four seventy-five transfer.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka. Is there any other questions on that one?
I would just note that there would not be time to advertise for an additional appropriation before the December fifth meeting. Ten, takes ten days notice, plus there's the advertising timelines.
Is that the workshop? Is December fifth the workshop, or is it when we're actually doing the A R P things?
The fifth?
That is when you're doing the A R P.
You'd have to get it out.
To advertise A R P.
Well, here's the deal. That money's been spent. You gotta pay the bills. I.
So.
I won't be around.
The reality is, is getting everything done with A R P funds on that one day, December fifth, is not a reality. So there's probably gonna have to be another meeting after that to clean up the A R P funds.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
Can I, did you vote on that one already?
Nope.
No.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There's one more. I didn't know if Judge Alavizos would be here, so I had put one under the auditor's office on their behalf. Uh, so I don't know if, uh, in case he has any explanations he wants to share, but the very last page, and it's the second one down for the J D I payroll increase that was approved in November of twenty twenty-three.
Which, what, what is it, thirty-three?
Yeah, uh, there's an extra three in there, though.
Well, there sure is. Thank you. Unless you wanna give that, then you would take it.
No, yeah, no. The, uh.
The J D I was approved in November. The, uh, budget was already advertised, so it couldn't be changed in the budget, so it needed to be appropriated this year.
My understanding is that person will be moving to a different role come January first, and it'll be filled by something else, but the position still will be functioning. This would be for the person who's currently sitting there, though.
Sure.
You approved it, but didn't fund it.
I got, I got nothing to say.
I got nothing.
What's your pleasure? We've moved over to the, uh, page six. Request for additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development opioid, wind tax or A R P, riverboat, personal services from J D I payroll increase, approved in a twenty twenty-three budget.
No, it was.
Apparently it was never.
No, it was approved this summer, late summer, maybe early.
It's twenty twenty-three budget.
Twenty twenty-three is when it was. It was approved.
Oh, actually, it was, okay. How time flies.
Never met, made it in the.
Okay.
And for clarity, you mentioned an extra three, right? This should be.
Yeah, it's three, it's three thirty, it's three thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, it's not three, thirty-three thou. Otherwise, I'm applying for that job at my retirement.
And I believe.
Your pleasure.
Maybe I could.
I believe it's one of the ones that we were told, um, in the beginning of the year, to just come back later if they still needed the funds, when we had the appropriations in January for the budget changes.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve out of, uh, for three thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars out of wind tax.
Motion by Mr. Keel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. On wind tax. Any other questions or comments?
There's only fifty-five hundred in the tax.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I got two.
Two nays. Thank you.
I'll wait your email.
Heard you had one heck of a party.
It was a surprise.
Yeah, I heard that too.
I wasn't happy at first.
I know you weren't, but I didn't want one.
But it turned out okay. It's lovely.
Thank you for all your.
Thank you. Thank you guys, too.
No, no, for justice.
Thanks, Tommy. Congratulations. Next item, we'll go back over to page three. Next item is Pioneer Cemetery Requesting to Transfer from painting, from painting and paint supplies to cover some tax exposure.
Motion to approve forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye.
In, in council addition, I think we need to debate it for at least two hours for the amount like.
These are usually the ones that'll hold us up for a while. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
My silence is meant to be an aye.
The next item is Lepore County Animal Shelter. Request transfer from the, from their donation, um, account for five thousand dollars for supplies, six hundred dollars for, uh, in-house equipment repair, and thirteen thousand dollars for other charges. We're currently without a animal director, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Second.
Second by Mr. I was gonna call you Mr. Keel there for a second there. Just stuck on. Mr. Karanka. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The next item is request an additional appropriation from all the different accounts, uh, for office supplies, repair and maintenance, an amount of a thousand dollars, employee education, an amount of eight thousand dollars, which we're going to transfer that over to food as soon as we're done. Food for two thousand dollars, uniform for a thousand dollars, and vet in hospital, an amount of twenty-two thousand, so it totals thirty-four thousand, five sixty-eight.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat. You got a question?
A second. Uh, somebody else I'm sure will know, but what was the reason they went over on so many of these?
So, the. I'm gonna say this as nice as I can. The previous director, there was not a lot of communication. This is what they found when the new director went in. That's no longer there also, so we got another new director coming in. But like, on, in, in the next one, when it comes to like department head and things, uh, he went to the commissioners and asked to get paid his sick days, and they asked him if he had money, and he said yes, and he took it out of his salary. So now there's not enough money to pay the current director for the rest of the year. There's not enough money to pay. Uh, I think of all the payroll accounts, there was one that had enough money to pay to the end of the year. So we've got some things that they're in the process of cleaning up out there.
Got you. The new director's left?
The new director is gone, and they're working on another new director. But in the meantime.
Wasn't aware of that.
In the meantime, um, Jane Bernard has stepped back in, and she's, she spent the entire day out there with several people working on, going over the budget to make sure. Darlene, Annie was there, um, and Diane, I think. Trying to go through all the bills to make sure everything gets paid. There were a lot of unpaid bills and things, so.
Very good.
So what's your pleasure on the thirty-four thousand, five sixty-eight?
We have, uh.
There's a motion, and a second.
Motion and second.
All right, then.
All those in favor.
Good, don't, don't.
Sorry.
What?
My apologies.
You said pertaining to this?
No.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Two nays.
For Riverboat, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next item is the, um, is the payroll, so professional services in the amount of sixty-eight hundred, seven hundred, seventy-five hundred, seventy-four hundred, and three thousand, totaling twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Out of Riverboat again. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two.
Good ayes.
Next item is transfer. The eight thousand dollars that we just appropriated for, uh, education and training to the food fund. This budget was originally submitted by the previous director that's no longer there, and when they examined everything today, they need more money in the food than they do in the education at this time, so they're asking for that to.
Motion approved.
Eight thousand.
Motion approved transfer, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Is there any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The, the next item, and I think you may have already taken care of this, the thirty-four thousand, five sixty-eight that the previous director deposited, it was a donation check, and it went into the general fund, and you're in the process of rehearsing.
I was told it was fifty-one thousand is the check that was deposited, so what we're waiting for, just so you know that it's not done, and it won't be done until uh, we, part of the, the check was from Unity Foundation, so we need to get the paperwork that they have for Unity, because if it's considered a grant, then it needs to go into a different fund.
It's, it's the residual off of a million dollars trust. They, they get it every year.
We just need to find out how they.
But it's supposed to go, goes in a donation fund every year, and that's where it should have gone.
They should give us paperwork for that, so that we know what we're doing. Um, and once they do, then, and I sent it in an email to you.
I don't think we need to do anything, really, do we? We don't need to reverse it.
As long as we get everything we need, because it's an error, we can fix it without a problem, yeah.
All right, and we don't need to act on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Lepore County Sheriff Requesting Transfer from the General Fund Patrolman Incentive Pay. The incentive pay appropriation from Lit Public Safety has been used in full. The department is requesting more funds to use for incentive pay for the thirty deputies. The amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred.
Good evening, councilmen. This is just more of a, a transfer. We have the money in our budget. Uh, we just need to move it over into the proper account.
Mr. President, motion approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Just out of. Just out of curiosity, we don't have enough money budgeted for that?
No, we didn't. When we came to you, uh, would have been two years ago now, uh, we were going off with our current staffing levels. We've become fully staffed. We did address this issue in the budgeting hearings back in the summer.
All right, just wanted to make sure. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is request additional appropriation reimbursement for the CHIRP grant for personal services and payroll ordinance, so...
This is just to pay out of the CHIRP grant.
Right.
Motion to approve.
This is our yearly traffic enforcement grants that we get through the state, such as DUI task force, click at a ticket, it's all under the CHIRP program.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagowski. Any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And move on, oh, sorry, ignore that very next line, and then move on to requesting an additional tran... appropriation. There was an error written in there.
Gotcha. The one-twenty?
The twenty-two-four dash eleven.
Oh, oh, oh.
In the law.
Extraneous.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. I see. Requesting an additional appropriation from Lit Public Safety opioid restricted, all the other accounts, supplies and foods, an amount of one hundred and twenty thousand. Is for the jail?
It's for the jail.
Is it through the end of the year?
This is, gets cleaned to the end of the year. Uh, the biggest reason for that is the population has been up in the jail. Uh, we saw when we budgeted for the jail, uh, food during the budget hearing process last year, we took a historical analysis of the last four years. Our average daily population over the last four years is probably in the three twenties to three thirties. Uh, come late March, early April, we saw it go up to two, three eighty, to three seventy. So it's just the populations up in the jail, and that's the reason for...
What's your pleasure?
One second.
Motion to approve out of Lit Economic Development.
Motion by Mr. Krunka.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Two. Requesting appropriation, Mr. Minut Fund service charges for sink, counter, and electric, an amount of twelve thousand, six hundred, thirty-one dollars.
Motion to approve.
Eight cents. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions or comments? The supporting document has everything, and if anybody has any questions.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County Jail requesting a reduction from Lit Public Safety for the funds needed for the courthouse security. If you look at this one and the next one, we're gonna take it from one and pay the other. So, um, it's five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Motion to approve.
You're gonna approve both of those, Earl?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Krunka for the next two items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
You wanna give us a report?
Uh, on the water, y- yeah, we can. Thanks to, to Andy Skiat back here. Uh, we have a busted, uh, would be a water heat line that, that busted, and it was leaking all over, so...
Water line?
Yes. So, uh, they got on it, uh, building maintenance, and Andy and his crew got on it really quick. Uh, I don't believe there's gonna be significant damage. There's obviously gonna be some damage, because we had water come down, but it's, it's, um, uh, I think, uh, we're in much better position.
What floor was it on?
It was right above our processing area. So it'd be on the main floor here.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Is that what caused the alarms to go off?
That's exactly what was causing the alarms to go off. Yep, thank you.
She can do it.
Corner.
And then...
Oh, yeah. So Port County, next item, so Port County Corner, um, requesting appropriation from the Coroner's Autopsy Fund, an amount of prisoner autopsies, an amount of thirty thousand dollars, and appropriation of revert EFT, an amount of five thousand dollars.
Yes. What this is, is I currently have, um, twenty thousand dollars sitting in the fund that's come in from the state that I need appropriated to be able to pay the invoices. And I'm assuming the other ten thousand was, um, what was put into the ordinance, which I'm not exactly sure why I need that, because I don't ever pay him until I get the money from the state anyway.
So the, the ordinance was the ordinance. It wasn't, we didn't fund anything with the ordinance yet. So you don't need the ten thousand dollars in addition to the twenty thousand that you already have right now?
I do not, because like I said, I don't pay him until the invoice comes in, or until the check comes in from the state. He doesn't get paid like immediately after he does the autopsy. He knows that he waits until the state sends their money in.
So we can take this thirty thousand dollars off of there, or do we need appropriate, we need to appropriate it?
Yeah, so...
You need to appropriate it.
If I can explain, oh, when is Lynn on the phone?
Lynn's out of the phone.
Talking and that doesn't help. So if I can explain, she had mentioned the twenty thousand, and we, uh, she and I had talked, and I said, I can do thirty thousand, so that way she has approval ahead of time, basically, from you. The appropriation is ready and done, so that when the check comes in, she can pay it out without having to come back again and getting that. So she's saying with that kind of approval, which is how a replaceable, or reimbursable grant works, for example, then she doesn't necessarily need the ten thousand put into the fund by the council. As long as she has approved, has an appropriation or a budget that says, this is my budget of ten thousand. Her account may have a zero balance, so she can't send anything out, but then when a check comes in for ten thousand, she could send it out. Does that make sense?
But she has twenty thousand dollars to do that?
That's what she said.
Okay.
I do not know that answer, but we were doing a thirty, and because she had mentioned that there could be more coming the rest of the year, so to avoid having to come back.
And there will be.
But you just stated, is you doing twenty thousand or thirty thousand? That's a stupid question.
Currently, there's, there should be in the account right now that has not been appropriated, twenty thousand dollars.
So if we appropriate that twenty, is that enough to get you?
No.
That would be enough until the next check comes in.
Yeah.
So let me understand, with this ordinance, do I still have to come before the council to appropriate the money? Or is it just when the money comes in, then I can ask for it to be appropriated through the auditor's office and have the check mailed?
And it's put in a budget.
Regardless of the ordinance, which we can talk about for in a minute, if they give you permission to pay from that fund, knowing that, um, the money's not in there, and you and I have already talked that the auditor's office won't pay out if the fund is at zero. So as long as they give approval or a budget, for example, um, then you already have that appropriation and don't need to come back. So that was the reason why we, you were asking for thirty, because like you said, you have the twenty, but you wanna make sure you have the rest for the rest of the year. So this would give you the appropriation of the additional ten, in case you get that much back in December. Plus, there was an EFT that Kylie was holding a five thousand that you and I talked about, that also needed to be appropriated. So what this...
It's, it's the five thousand, and then there's another one for fifteen thousand, where it's, which is where I'm coming up with the twenty.
Okay, so if they approve this thirty and this five, then it would leave you, I can't do math that fast without my calculator.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand to use the rest of the year if you get a check for that. You would already have the appropriation and not need to come back.
Okay, but my question is still, each month, do I have to come back?
If it's not approved for the amount that you need, yes, absolutely. So let's say that they give you a budget of, of thirty thousand, and you hit that thirty thousand in February, you would need to come back to have more appropriated, because an appropriation is a permission to spend. So if they give you a permission to spend a thirty, and you use that, then you have to come back for more, yes.
Okay, this just seems like twice as much tracking as we used to have. The money would come in...
It wasn't done correctly.
It would get appropriated into the account, and then I would send the check, or have you guys send the check. Now it's I have to come back and ask, and ask, can I pay it? The money's here, but can I pay it?
Not if you get it appropriated ahead of time, you don't.
So let me, let me just ask, if she's got twenty thousand dollars in her account, how are we appropriating thirty thousand dollars?
She asked for more to make sure she had enough for the rest of the year.
We're not, we're not... She has that money in her account?
No, she doesn't, but she's asking for permission to spend it as it come, as the checks come in. So what she's asking for, she's trying to find a way that every time she gets a check, she doesn't have to come back before.
Yeah, but that's... Asking for permission to spend more than she has.
The, the whole purpose of this ordinance was to cede the ordinance, to give her a float. That would be two autopsies, because she's gonna have, she has a ninety-day return period or something like that. So she should not need more money appropriated at a later date. It should be, it's gonna be a non-reverting fund, and as the monies come in, the monies will be there, and she just needs to account to you all on a quarterly basis by giving you a report. Uh, so I don't know why the coroner is making things way so, so difficult, but we need to get this set up.
I think it's...
I'm not making it difficult. It was very simple before, the check...
Well, that's because...
It would get appropriated. I didn't have to go to the council to ask, can I pay the bill? When the money came in, it was appropriated into the account, and I put a PO to have the bill paid. That's how simple it was. Now, the money comes in, they won't appropriate it into the account until I come before the council...
We're resolved, we're resolving that.
So the ordinance resolved that. The ordinance resolved that.
It's gonna resolve that.
It's a good, we're good.
Your problem.
So my question is, is, my only question is, is are we appropriating twenty thousand, not appropriating, but are we approving the appropriation of twenty thousand or thirty thousand?
Whatever she needs, okay.
She only has twenty, so I mean...
If that's what she wants, then, yep, that's good.
So that would be fifteen and five.
Five inches below it, right.
Yes.
But then she wouldn't have any for the rest.
So it'd be fifteen and five. All right. What would you guys like to do?
Motion to approve, uh, the appropriations from the Coroner Autopsy Fund for prisoner autopsies in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and the appropriation received by EFT of five thousand dollars.
Motion by Mr. Krunka.
I second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Fifteen and five.
All right, so let's go to the next one.
Next item is request an appropriation from the Coroner's Non-Reverting Fund Capital Purchase for a TV for Training, four hundred dollars. Mr. Yagowski.
So, um, I checked with this. I was almost positive. So there's an eighty-two inch TV that's right outside of her door. It's on a cart. There's a, there's another TV that's, uh, just down the hall from there, and there's also a training facility in, in the AMS. So they, I, most of them, aye.
Motion to deny by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Okay, I was not asking for an additional appropriation. I was asking to spend it out of my non-reverting fund.
Motion to deny. Motion and seconded by Mr. Mullenhour. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Prosecutor requesting an appropriation from county user funds. Uh, for the incentive funds, personal services for correct the bonuses, seventeen hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Yes, sir. Essentially moving from one fund to another.
You're making up a shortage?
Yes, sir.
So we overpaid somebody by seventeen hundred and seventy-six dollars?
It was an audit position from the state, so this is the best way to do it. It's our funds going into our funds. They wanted us to use general funds. We told them, no. And so this is the best...
My question is, did we overpay somebody by seventeen hundred and seventy-six dollars?
Or was there a shortage overall?
Weren't there some bonuses given last year?
There were. Uh...
Did we give someone more of a bonus than they deserved?
No. But the state said we had to change our math, so that's what we're doing. So just, the county user fee fund, just his money.
What do you want to do?
His discretion.
Motion by Mr...
I just, I, I know your question, obviously, there was an, there was an issue there.
Oh, have we, is this person still employed by Lepore County?
Yes.
Have we asked him to give the seventeen hundred and seventy-six dollars back? Or take twenty dollars in check out of his pay until we give that money back? If he's overpaid, he's overpaid.
The... The issue was, the state had disagreements with us as to how one employee was given a bonus, and so this seemed to be the best way to resolve it without just telling the state, hell, no. So, 'cause that's what we wanted to do at first, and they said, well, this'll cause you problems down the road, 'cause this employee earned this money. But there, the state's solution was to say, use general funds to pay for this to, because you're wrong in how you did this in using your incentive funds by which, by statute, we have the right to control. So we told the state, this seems to be the best way to handle it, instead of taking, because they had this ludicrous position as, well, if you're gonna pay a part-time employee a bonus, you gotta pay them on a pro rata basis, and then on that pro rata basis, you gotta do a general fund and then incentive fund. It's like, this is ludicrous. So we decided, we're just gonna take our money, put it with our money, everyone's happy.
So, so maybe to clarify, it wasn't that the bonus was given in error, it was more that it was a disagreement between the state and your office. You fully intended to give them this bonus, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, because last year, my team, and it, and it didn't seem to penalize one employee and with this, this, this crazy audit position from the Child Support Bureau, and it's just, yeah.
Even when we asked about it, I will say there was nothing in the statute or the, um, uh, paperwork where, from what the state gave us that, oh... That said that he had that problem. Like, there was nothing ahead of time that alluded to how, having that issue.
'Cause they have a...
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Keel. Is there more question, discussion, Mr. Cunningham?
What's the motion?
No, I'm fine now, to, to approve.
Okay.
To approve using the user fee fund.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I got one, eh.
Next item, request an additional appropriation for pre-trial diversion. Capital purchase radar signs for the city of Lepore, an amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. You're gonna make him walk all the way.
Well, it, it's, we're doing, we're doing a good thing for Lepore, and we've, so for the last year or two, we've been providing signs, radar signs that display the speed, their solar power. We've been doing these through all these, uh, different communities. Wanata has asked for, for four. We're probably gonna give them two. Kingsford Heights just sent, uh, an email request today for a sign that they can put in. So by, by the end of it, we'll have deployed four, uh, one in Michiana Shores, one in Long Beach...
Two in Trail Creek.
Two in Trail Creek, and then this'll be, that's four plus another four. We're looking at twelve maybe by the end of the year, so... And this is money that we're paying, and it, and it, and it reduces speed. We've, we just, at our chief's meeting, I think, just...
Here, I'll help you. Mr. President, make a motion to approve sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-two.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions?
If you have data on how effective it is, I'd be interested in seeing it. Feel free to send it over.
It, it does, it does handle the data, and that comes through, uh, along with the signs, so we'll be able to tell what time of day cars are speeding. It's effective as far as slowing them down, where we can add more patrol.
Slows me down every time I go through Trail Creek.
Uh, speaking with a couple of other chiefs in the area, they're very happy with them, and they, they work on them.
No. For the record, that was, uh, Chief Buell speaking?
Uh, no, I just wanna say, they're effective on Johnson Road and Trail Creek. I just wanna tell you that. So, I didn't know they tracked how fast you were going, though.
Motion?
Uh, it, yes, it tracks the car's speed, and, uh, if they slow down, so...
Those are the...
Put your license plate next time.
Those are the new system, I think, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item is report, request appropriation of reimbursement from the EFT for Adult Protective Services in the amount of forty-five thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Krunka.
Mr. Cunningham.
Cunningham.
It was Mr. Cunningham.
All right.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is adult, adult probation, request an appropriation from Sumprenlal. Uh, personal services salary amount missing from the budget last year. Noticed... Noticed after budget was advertised, amount of $10,000. Is this for the money that we?
This is your motion.
Asked you to.
Motion to approve.
All right. Yeah. I believe so.
Don't, don't be, don't hate.
I know there's no hate. Don't hate. No judging.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Oh, second by Mr. Yagowski.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Will this require any change to salary ordinance?
Oh, I think we already.
It shouldn't. Those, those folks were in the salary ordinance.
Right.
So we're good.
It, it, the budget was not approved in total. So this is just to make that up.
Got it. Just to make the salary.
25?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
And since I have you. I'll make it brief. We're having a retreat in January. Can I use probation fees to buy food for the people at the retreat training? It's budgeted, it's user fees, it's no tax dollars, but I got permission from the commissioner, so I.
Motion to approve. All right, second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second and by Mr. Cunningham.
Did you have a dollar amount in mind?
No, I'm, we haven't gotten that far.
How many days is it?
Under.
One day.
One day.
Under a thousand, under, under.
Under a thousand.
Okay.
Clearly.
Not to exceed a thousand.
Not to exceed.
Unless Randy comes.
Randy.
Not to exceed a thousand.
Right, not to exceed a thousand. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you all. January 23rd.
The, um, the thing that we corrected for the 2023 for the, was it the judge, Judge Alvesos's person, JDI?
Yep.
Was that in the salary ordinance? So we don't, we don't need to worry about that. All right. All right. Next item is drug-free partnership, request appropriation from Lit Economic Development Riverboat. And we added opioid restricted to the agenda. It was advertised in the amount of $750,000.
Motion to approve 400,000 out of opioid unrestricted, 1238 and 350,000 out of Lit Economic Development.
I would just bring up a point after you, if somebody seconds that.
Do you have a second and a discussion too?
Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Mr. Rosenbaum, were you referring to opioid restricted?
Yes. Restricted, yes.
Okay.
Restricted is what I meant because it's the only one with any funds.
Right. So we have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka. Yes, Mr. Terrence, do you have a question?
Well, I mean, I don't have a question. I just, I, I might have a concern regarding the ARP funds.
We're not using ARP.
Did I hear?
Nope.
No, nothing out of ARP.
Lit? Did you say economic?
I said economic lit for 350 and 400 out of opioid.
I have to change my, uh. I have to change my contract.
All right. Is there any other, so, so just, uh, if you guys got the email, but, uh, Franciscan, you wanna just listen up? Real quick, Franciscan, I don't know if John wants to, he did a great job on the phone the other day. Franciscan has committed a building site and they're gonna donate that property.
You wanna go ahead, John?
And, and you guys are, yeah, sure. So, um, real quick, what you have before you is, uh, the two lots that are across the street from the former, oh, John Gilmore, uh, with Ton of Blank Construction, Union Mills, Indiana. Uh, what you have before you is first the site plan showing two lots that are across the street from the former, um, St. Anthony Hospital in Michigan City. Uh, it's about 0.85 acres, I think, um, total. It's separated by an alley, but it's nice because it's already paved. So one side would be a parking lot. The other side would be where the facility would go. There's a site plan showing the facility on, on one of those plots. There's some pictures showing what the one Mitch built in Valpo looks like. So it'd be similar. So it looks like a residence, um, in a neighborhood. And our budget for that is 1.8 million dollars. That doesn't include the property that's being donated by Franciscan. We have a letter here from Kevin Leahy, who's the, uh, president, CEO of Franciscan Alliance, who has committed to donating that property, which is, uh, valued at about $150,000, which isn't part of the 1.8 million. But of the 1.8 million, um, Ton of Blank is going to donate the design fees of 100,000 and our fee of 90,000. So that'll take it down to about 1.6 million. And we hope if we can duplicate what we've done in Valpo for this homeless shelter, be able to get about a third of that donated, um, through our vendors and, uh, our contractors. So we take it down to hopefully about a million bucks that needs to be funded. And your $750,000 certainly would be, uh, very welcome and, and go a long way. And then we're still going to the Health Foundation, outside grants and the city of Michigan City.
That's correct.
Correct. Mr. Yagowski.
Sorry, question, um. The area was hospital and parking lot or just parking lot zoned? You know?
It, it would've been zoned the same healthcare designation as the hospital, cause it was part of the hospital property.
So would, would there be, have to be any public input that we're billing it, billing there for some of the people concerned around the neighborhood?
What Mitch has done in the past, uh, is indicate that, um, they've had meetings in Valpo. I'll let you address that.
There's always a lot of public outcry about these things.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking.
Always. And what we did in advance of the zoning meeting, we held meetings and I would certainly plan to attend those as well. And what we do is explain what the program consists of, the curfew, the security systems, the sign in, sign out, the drug testing, both random and at suspicion. Um, and that these are people not using drugs contrary, and if they are using, they go. If we have a problem, it's, it's exited. Um, and, and the re, by the time we get to the actual B Z A meeting, there was only, at the homeless shelter, there was one man that just had some questions. At the, um, halfway house meeting, there were four people. At the first halfway house, there were none. Um, that showed up to remonstrate. So by the time we get to the zoning hearing, we've already set these public forum meetings in the neighborhood for people to show up. We've given notice to everybody, I think, within 300 feet, plus any activists we know that are in the area that wanna be heard. We make sure we include those. And it really does, the neighbors now, I had one elderly lady walking her dog by Respite House 2 and said, do you have anything to do with this? I said, well, yeah. And she said, I just wanna let you know, this is the best thing that's happened in the neighborhood. And I asked the guy across the street who has a fourplex and the neighbors in back, any issues? Nope. No problems. I did put up a fence along the back just to shield where the guys sit on the back porch and smoke from the neighbor's house. But he put up a big stockade fence around his backyard. So I went over there with about four grand in my pocket or in my hand and said, hey, did you put that fence up just because of us building this? He said, no, we bought a dog. And he would not take any money. So we have had no issues in the neighborhood and we've been up and running since 2020, April of 2021.
Right.
And we've had no, up until recently, we did have a police call cause some guy was playing his stereo too loud and he called the police. But up until then, we have had no police calls at either one and two, other than we did have one police call, um, this last year for an older dog.
So we're not really sure if it would need a zoning change.
It may not. It may not need it if it's zone industrial, you know, or residential, high density residential would be kind of the zoning.
Yep.
But if you do, I mean, you can address those issues in the neighborhood.
You try to get ahead of them.
That's just, I'm just, I'm just trying to get ahead of it, that's all.
Right. It, it's an issue. It's absolutely a potential issue.
One of the biggest problems in Michigan City, I can tell you, example of this is that, is the hanging out in the back, smoking the cigarettes, all that kinda stuff. I think that if we could at least address those type of things, that, that should just not, there shouldn't be any smoking on that. If you wanna be in a program, you're not gonna smoke here. You can wait.
A lot of them smoke though.
Yeah, I know. But there's a problem with people that, can guy go around the area? And it's not just this area. I've talked about, I can name the other four places that are in town where there, there is complaints about that.
Right.
Look the one, yeah. I guess that's the only issue that we have. I think we're doing pretty good. So with that, any other questions or comments?
Comment. Mr. President, sometimes when buildings like this get built, a plaque all of a sudden appears that says, you know, names all the council members or commissioners. I would ask that this council vote if we're gonna have a plaque that says paid for by the citizens of Laporte County, not naming any of the seven of the council members.
Second.
Yeah.
So your budget just went up that much. So.
Bless names, bless.
We can use, we can use a marker. Ours doesn't have to be fancy. We're not fancy people. You gonna add that to the motion?
Yes.
You guys good with that? The guys that made the motion?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you.
We will keep you updated.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Appreciate. Seven ayes. Appreciate your support group too.
Wendy, y'all made the money. I can have it to that little.
Heck, we have. Next item is, is Laporte County Extension Board. Requesting $5,000. This is for a, a gate out at the extension office. Since nobody's here from, it might've been on Zoom. Um, if you've ever been to the extension office, there's a, there's a large classroom in the extension office. And when you walk in the front door, to the right is soil and water and to the left is extension office. And it's wide open. So you could, you could literally walk around the counter and go to every desk that's in there. Um, but as you walk down the hall, there's the classroom. And the purpose for this gate is to close that off on, on both ends so that they could just have people that use the building after hours, come in and out of the back door. Cause right now they have to have an employee stay and watch the front and to make sure it's locked up afterwards. So, uh, it's something that probably should've been designed into it when it was first done. Um, but to have an employee sit there, we've been to several meetings there and I've always kinda had.
He's down the plaque.
Right. I've always kinda like, what the heck are you still doing? They go, oh, we gotta stay and lock up and make sure nobody messes with stuff and because there's no way to keep the public from going through there. So that's the purpose of the gate. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve out of economic dollar.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosebaum, second by Mr. Karanka. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Next item is Laporte County Juvenile Services. Did you receive anything on that?
Mr. President, I did not.
Did you?
No, sir. Anybody else on the council?
No, sir. I will tell you, the one thing that I will tell you that, um, and, and the reason this is not gonna get voted on tonight is because it was, uh, it does not appear as though these items were bid. But in the State Board of Accounts, meaning exit interview we were in the other day, it is the commissioner's job to bid this, not the council. And when I asked them, they said, no, it's a commissioner's job, not the council's, even though we're gonna do this tonight. And Mr., um, Stamos even asked them, well, isn't the council violating rules or some kind of law, some kind of make-believe thing that he has? And they said, no, they're not. It's not the council's job. There's no responsibility for the council to withhold anything if it's been approved by the commissioners. Period. End of story. Pulling it off, anyway, Mr., I'm not speaking to you.
Does the council not have an obligation to protect the public?
Don't you, why did you pay the bills? Why do you pay bills? It sickens you. You hold your nose to pay the bills, but you pay them all. You smiling, yeah, you, you're just playing games. Come on, Timmy. Come on, Timmy. You're all, it's all make believe what you do. Keep going.
It's been a long, it's been a long. I think it's worth noting, they told us at the beginning of the exit interview, that if we were to speak about anything that was contained in that meeting, it was a misdemeanor.
So I just wanna say that we were cited prior for these things. So this was a private conversation, not the items that they brought up, just so you know. And besides, and besides, here's the thing, you and Mr. Haney don't believe in confidentiality of, of exec sessions and everything else. So just save it. Just save it. Really. So.
Keep talking for 15 minutes.
What's the council's pleasure, what's the council's pleasure to do with this? I asked Mr. Deion Campbell to get three, two other prices and he never got back. He said that, uh.
Mr. President, motion at table.
Second. Motion and, and Mr. Yagowski's thinking about him.
Question really quick. Not because of table. Hang on. Did we table this last time?
No, we.
I figured just ask him to come back.
They actually, you actually gave permission for us to proceed with it if, cause he said.
I know, make sure they didn't table over table, that's all.
Right. Mr. Mr. Campbell stated that.
Hey, is that, hold on, look, okay, right. So, so the issue would happen last time is he said that it was a government fleet price.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
To show us.
Motion good, actually. Yeah. Yeah. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Commissioners, request additional appropriation, professional services. This is for the veteran service. The first one is. And part-time veteran service officer, uh, George is finally retiring at the end of the year. So they hired a replacement for him. The first two items.
I didn't pay.
What's your pleasure?
Quick question. I'm looking at the request. It almost seems like.
There was an, there was an overlap, I believe, Mr. Karanka, between the folks. It's a very slight overlap.
Got it.
Like, it's a part-time position.
I can't recall, but I think they might've asked us for permission to do that.
I think so too.
Yeah.
It's just how the supporting document was said. Motion to approve of economic lit, second.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, second by Mr. Keel. On the first two items. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay. Now three.
Roll count.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
And Councilman. Karanka.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
Got it. Next market is a workman's compensation in the amount of $459,548. Anything you wanna?
Do you want me to? So, so this is, so our insurance policies have been staggered. This is a short year term for the workers' compensation. So it's premium. It's like a nine-month premium in order to get them all onto the same timeframe. So the insurance policies renew at the same time.
So this is a one-off thing then?
Well, it's, it's not, well, next year you're gonna have, that's gonna be part of the whole insurance package.
Okay. And in the budget.
You're asking the wrong person about the budget.
I got like a, like a nod no from Ms. Graves. Can we check into that? It's a big amount not to have in there that's missing.
I mean, yeah, work comp is always 800,000 dollars a year, 900,000 dollars a year. Yes, sir.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong. I budget time, not this particular item, but I could've swore we voted for workman's compensation in a line item.
I can look it up. I don't.
Would you? I, I, I understand. I just, I believe we did. So did we, maybe we didn't budget enough or maybe because it's an off year, I don't.
Well, this, this is gonna extend to, to.
Yeah, I get that, but we did.
I, I can't answer, I'm still dumb.
I'm almost positive we appropriated.
In commission.
But you know, we had a lot of problems with the, with the work comp in the past. Well, I, we got it behind for a period of time.
I know that you're representing the commissioners, but I know we have a lot of problems with, no, it's, it's attorney. I'm not, not, no, I understand. But I know we have a lot of problems with beg, borrow and steal within the commissioner's budget. I've talked to our finance committee today. This is an issue that comes up at the end of the year because they, I got bonded to Green with me right now, so this is good.
So the.
That they're, they, they keep stealing, they keep borrowing this money back at the end of the year. They're out of money, but we don't know where it all came from. Not that, that this item, I'm talking numerous items.
The assurance that we want is that money from the insurance funds, such as workman's comp, that money wasn't transferred out of there for other projects, leaving this one short. Can you verify that for us tomorrow?
Yes, but I, I do believe that the year that I first started, I think that it was, uh, the, the complete liability budget, if I'm not. I do believe that the year that I first started, I think that it was the, the complete liability budget, if I'm not mistaken, was under budgeted by a few million.
So.
And it's, it hasn't changed. So I do believe it's under budgeted.
I understand, but I thought we had a line item.
We just wanna make.
I'll look for workman's comp, and I'll look to see if it's been used for anything else.
Someone had mentioned they thought, just wanted to make sure that money wasn't taken out of there to use for other things, and left it short. Just.
Alright, hope for clarity, folks. Three-one-zero-zero-seven, workman's comp insurance. It's a zero line item. But the three-zero-zero-six-seven, which is little liability accident insurance premium, that was requested at one point six-six-three.
If I'm not mistaken, the workman's comp.
Also.
Was that workman's comp line item that was zero ever taken out? You, were you?
Never been anything other than zero when I've been here.
That's correct, but it, it, so I'm going back to the beginning of.
Money to zero?
Last year when there was a different person in the Commissioner's Secretary. She originally put money in that zeroed-out workman's comp account, and it shouldn't have been in there. There was.
No, she wouldn't have been here during a budget time, so I'm not sure otherwise.
There was an issue with that, and the question was, is, they go, well, that money doesn't go in there. It goes into the, I think, the other account. And so.
Well, I never, I never understood why work comp was thrown into liability to begin with, because it's totally different, but that's not here nor there.
But the workman's comp, they said that should never had any money in it, which doesn't make any sense, but we need to look into that.
I have a feeling it was all that forty-seven oh one account, and then when they took it out, it wasn't budgeted, but.
Yeah.
Mr. DiMartino, Auditers Office, could you guys figure that out and let us know? Because we wouldn't wanna get surprised by that next year, that there needs to be another half a million dollars at the end of the year in there.
Eight for the total. Eight for the total.
Well, I could provide what the policy premium is, and then the Auditers Office could take a look at it.
Absolutely. Alright. Did we already move on it?
No, we didn't.
We'll have a lot of choices.
No, we didn't make a motion on that part. We only made a motion on the top one. Top two, top two, sorry.
What would you like to do?
How much do we have left in ED Lit?
Let's take.
It's gonna die for. Oh, go, go ahead.
Let's take that. Motion to approve out of economic lit.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, is there a second?
I'll second it. I don't like it being pulled down the ED Lit, which I think should be on Economic Development things, but we're about down the choices, so.
Down the ERP.
Do you wanna do it on the ERP?
Put this on issues with the sewer projects.
No, good for no, because then we'd have to maybe find outside of, we can do that on Economic Development Lit, sewer project would be better.
Okay, I'm amenable to that.
Alright, I'll make the move. So re-statement of motion to where it comes out of ERP.
I'll second that.
Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
There wasn't a yay that came from that end of the, so you can call it wherever you want, but I'd call it four to three.
Four to three. Everybody agree, or?
Yes. Yeah, no, we agree. Councilman Cunningham.
Well, nobody called for a roll count. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't call for it. We're good. Sorry, passed or didn't pass? Next item is La Porte County. Are you good?
Yeah, he was asking a question.
Next item is La Porte County Building Maintenance Requesting Additional Appropriation from several different accounts, and Adam is the liaison for them. I'll let you.
Alright.
Take the lead on this.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Cheryl Listensky, Director. So I guess we can go down the list.
Sure. Sure. So Cheryl, if you don't mind, I'll cover this one. So it's, I wanna say it's either August or September, we had a meeting. She approached us about utility bills for water, and there was a confusing, what I'll call an orphan PO, that was for NIPSCO. But the claim ended up coming out of electrical, but we were confused by that claim to where you ended up reducing your request by that thirteen thousand dollars, and being the fact that it was just the purchase order, not the claim, so the funds were still there, it left you hanging.
Correct.
So that's where this first one is.
It's, yes, so now, to finish up the end of the year, for December, I need to pay our water bill. And that runs between, actually, it varies, thirteen and fifteen, sixteen thousand, but.
The commissioner's one little higher today.
Did the thirteen, so.
You wanna take every one of these separate?
Well, we're gonna probably have to, because of the amount she's asking for, one is four.
There's only, there's not a lot of, okay.
Yeah, keep going.
Alright, what do you wanna do with that one? Thirteen thousand dollars for water sewer utility bills. What's your?
Motion to approve out of Riverboat. So I have to split this up somehow.
Motion from Rosenbaum, second by Karanka. Any other questions on the water bill? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Two. Next item is the gym floor. In the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, yes, I originally received one quote for, it was difficult to find other people who would quote this floor. It's a welded floor. I did find two other vendors, one in Fort Wayne and one in, and I probably missed.
Ascot, Michigan.
Ascot, Michigan, correct. And I received emails back that they did not do the welded floor. Ascot, Michigan actually didn't do, they did do the welded floor, but they did not have what Deion Campbell wanted for his gym floor, which is a hardwood floor, like original basketball-looking floor. Where this vendor, they only had like floors that had like speckles in them. I guess it would look more for, to me, like for a weight room versus a gym floor.
I'm assuming it's a pattern in this welded, in this vinyl?
So this is a, this is like a six-millimeter vinyl flooring that's used.
She says one of the hardwood.
It's a hardwood print.
It's a print. Okay.
Okay, Mr. President, sorry.
Yeah.
With that conversation I talked with you earlier, it's a multipurpose room. It's not meant to be all this, but it's meant to be, we could use it for a series of things like that. There's nothing wrong with the original, what you caught the bid for. I don't think it has to go into that avenue, because you're gonna use it for all the other things. It's not meant for a gym floor, like a school gym floor. So I know it's a, it's a wish and a want here. And this is pretty expensive that we're considering.
Wasn't it?
It's a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
That's pretty expensive.
What's, do you, do you happen to know what the difference was between the wood print?
In capital is your.
And say, different colors?
So.
Yeah.
So having reviewed this with you, you showed me a letter where they said that we don't have what you hate.
Yeah, I mean, this floor is.
Quote. Correct, Angie? No quote.
Question, what is the material right now out there?
Carpet, carpet.
That's what I thought, still carpet.
It is.
Not recommending carpet for a gym floor.
With the basketball lines, and we're gonna have marked with the volleyball lines to make it look like.
It is, it is a gymnasium.
It's a multipurpose room. It's not.
Right, but.
You don't, but that's not what they're saying here, and.
Well, my, that's why I'm asking if there, if, if this.
Can I show you a picture?
Sure, I've, I've actually been out there. I've seen the carpet before, but you, you had two bids out there, and Mr. Campbell wants this. Well, it's nice, but that's a, how much more money difference is it?
That's what my, the question is, is additional cost for the.
The information isn't there. They know quoted before they offered a dollar value, before the conversation came up, from everything you showed me.
Be helpful to have Mr. Campbell come to the next meeting and make his case?
Well, that, but he, we're not, we're not, I mean, it's not from this year, but I don't know why it can't be done in January. So the conversation's not just that. He's gonna explain, is this a gymnasium now, and we're taking away the other multipurposes that we're gonna use this for? This is no school gym. It's just a multipurpose room that they can play basketball on. They've been playing on carpet up to now. I'm not saying we should be playing on carpet, but it's a multipurpose room.
But it was marked like a gym floor.
That's great, but that doesn't mean, but that doesn't change the conversation here.
Okay.
I guess what I'd advise, based off your comments, Mr. Yagowski, is that we hold on to this one, maybe re-approach the folks from Ascot, that use, get the same base flooring, quote, with the striping, right? So it's one for one in terms of purposes, but instead of being a basketball wood grain is the flaked whatever they offer, and let's see what it compares to. It may come out to where this vinyl is cheaper. The vinyl with the wood grain is cheaper, so, but it's just something to, to put us in a better protected state when it comes to audit findings and those sorts of things, that we're doing the best thing from a competitive nature. Cost prohibitive, you know what I mean?
We done talked about it.
We're gonna hold on to that. Motion to table the gym floors by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Gym floor is held over. Waterproofing the courthouse basement, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, I did go out and get three bids for the waterproofing. This the vendor I would like to go with, it was comparable to another vendor. The only difference was, actually, there's two additional April air dehumidifiers on the vendor that I would like to have come in and do the work. And can I say the vendor?
Or.
And that's Nova.
So to go a little bit further with this, it's a five hundred dollar difference on a fifty thousand dollar project with additional equipment. So that's what I proposed.
We already had the dehumidifiers, don't we?
It's a four hundred and eighty-nine.
Bomb building.
We, we made it funny in our agenda meeting today too about that, so.
Motion to approve out of economic development.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka for the waterproofing.
Go ahead. One quick statement, this is, so the folks at home understand, or the folks right here that understand, it is the, yeah, right. It's the, it's the basement to the historic courthouse we're attached to, where this is to keep from having ankle-deep water, especially in areas where we're doing electrical work for repairs or other needs.
Correct. And it naturally builds up because of the stone.
Because of the stone in the area we're at.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Next item is course and fire and security invoice in the amount of nine thousand, six fifty seventy-nine.
Yes, so these are for our jail inspections, and also for a deficiency repair. And we just got our jail inspected, and we haven't received the repair deficiencies yet, so actually it is, we'll be coming back for more additional to get those repairs if we do have those in the jail.
Did you already have the invoice for the inspection?
I have, yes.
Okay.
How much is the invoice for the inspection?
How much? Just, let's see, I don't have it separated. I have a lot here. Five thousand, seven hundred, fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. For the inspections, for the repair, three thousand, eight hundred, ninety-nine dollars and four cents.
This is for the fire protection system?
Yes.
Yep. Which account you wanna use?
I go back, I go back to Riverboat for the smaller amount.
Second.
And then make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka out of Riverboat. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Next item is the generator rental. As everybody knows, we funded a generator that is, it's got a long lead time, and in the meantime, we have a rental generator out there because we're required to. So this is to cover the cost of that, hopefully until the time that.
Good evening, Council, Councilman. I'm Andy Ski at Marques Electric in the Port County Project Management. So some of these bills on here are mine. I clearly understand that I'm a vendor, I'm not employed by the county, but any questions or complaints, I figured I'd just come field those myself to save Cheryl from having to answer those on my behalf respectfully.
This hundred and ten thousand dollars, will that take us up until the, about the time that it's gonna be delivered?
Um, one thing that I can answer, Cheryl would have to answer, is the hundred and ten thousand. I don't know if that's to pay bills that we've already submitted, or bills that are forthcoming, and we still don't have a current ETA on when the permanent generator will come. May I approach the bench for a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You know what, you know which one? Are they previous or? Cheryl?
Originally, the council appropriated three hundred thousand.
Right.
For the new generator, which.
For the rental?
Huh?
For the rental?
No, the first.
The new generator. So, which the new generator's going to cost two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Which gives, leaves the remainder there for sixty-one thousand, six ninety-two. The total cost right now for the generator rental up to February is, from March through February, is a hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, so I did minus out what I had left over from that three hundred thousand, after that new generator is repaired.
That's how you come up with a hundred and ten?
How many months was that again? I'm sorry, what was the month period? I apologize.
It's gonna be approximately March to sometime in January or February. We're not sure yet on the exact ETA, and then depending on the weather, we have to do some underground work and some site work once the new unit comes. So depending when it actually arrives, and the weather, if it's suitable to do that underground work, February, January, around there. So one reason I wanted to come is, you know, when, when you look at the amount, obviously it's a big amount. Nobody's disputing that. But that's not all monies that were paid to me, to be clear. So most of that money is through the subcontractor, which is McAllister, which is who you use to purchase the new unit. So if we could turn to their bill, which starts on the second page, and you will see clearly that they, that obviously that's a month-by-month charge. So they're charging for the, the pigtails, the cables, everything, the battery charger, piece by piece. And then if you turn to the second page of their bill, it notes clearly, it says, these rates reflect a unit onsite at standby, not running. So that's a lot of money. But if the unit actually runs, their fees will go up. That's to have it sit there doing nothing. And then it says, it's the customer's responsibility to perform the daily inspections and maintain the fluid levels of the unit. Failure to do so could result in damages billed to the customer. And then it says again, one more time about the fluid. So, so that's where we come in, is the unit sitting there, we're local. So on that bill here, you'll see the one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, that is our fee for the month for multiple checks to check that unit, check the fuel, make sure it's in proper working order, and the rest of that is McAllister. So the reason we're involved is because we're local, it's cheaper for us to stop and check on that unit than McAllister, but most of those fees are coming from McAllister, just to be clear.
So the estimated time still is the same, or what are we looking, February's the date we're looking at? That's still the date?
February is the target.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion, Mark?
No.
Okay, alright, that maybe.
That's true.
Maybe it's a motion.
Make a motion out of economic lit for a hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Next item's La Porte County, uh, it's La Porte County. La Porte County Courthouse Water Heater Replacement in Copper Lines, in amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred. This was two water heaters?
Those are my bills also. I apologize for not having a packet for you. I didn't realize those. Those are my bills also. I apologize for not having a packet for you. I didn't realize those two bills were on the agenda this evening. So those are, we, we knew there was one water heater leaking in the courthouse, um, there was actually two water heaters, um, in that cost as the price to do some abatement, so some of the insulation close to the unit was asbestos. We abated that, we had those two units replaced, and put new units in and re-insulated those pipes, so that's the cost for two units, including the asbestos abatement.
It is in the packet.
I meant my breakdown, yeah, because I would have brought the asbestos and everything, just for clarification, so, yes, thank you, auditor.
What you'd like to do?
I'm gonna go back to motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krunka. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Next item is juvenile services roof in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand, five oh five, oh five. So questions? Mr. Yagowski. How many bids do we get, do we get on this?
I can answer that for you.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
There was one bid, J.B. West, no other bid.
Is there, and is there a problem, the reason I'm asking is, all these companies out there right now, I had my roof done, and plus I had rental units done. They have a person that just does bids, so they're coming out every, I've got three companies keeping my little house compared to this big job.
You probably had storm chasers because of the hail damage.
No, they're name, they're name brand companies, they're modern. They're name brand.
I'm only kidding.
No, I'm saying, I just don't understand, did we not check, because I can't believe, I'm not saying we didn't do it, that these guys
Published.
Well, published is one thing, and I get that.
And it was noticed?
I've been in other boards beside this one, and I, when you have problems like this, you try to somewhat go out there and try to find them too also. But I get it, but that's it.
Mr. Yagowski. Previously, um, I believe it was a year ago, the previous administration did give bids for the juvie center. And it wa, there were four, um, vendors that bid on it. I reached out to all four vendors, um, and I did have interest, um, and they all had said that they were gonna come to the pre-bid meeting, and I don't know, but it was communicated to four previous vendors that bid on it previously.
You question, you don't have to tell me how much, but was there a big difference between a year ago and now?
Yes, there, not, I wouldn't say a big difference, but yes, there was.
This is higher now?
Is the roof leaking currently?
Yes.
It is.
Can I ask what type of roof they're planning to replace it?
Asphalt shingle. And the other thing is, if you recall from Red Mill, this is J.B. West, if you're gonna appropriate, you're gonna have to give them the authority to pay the half down upfront. You had that issue with Red Mill. So, just want, that's in the terms of the contract.
Okay.
I did see it, and so it wasn't negotiated before the bid, so.
It was, yes, sir, okay, I was gonna ask, because I meant, I, I, on my house, I negotiate, they're, they're gonna hold off till they get the final payment, so I was asking this question.
Yeah, I, yeah.
The roof is thirty-two years old.
I'm okay with that, I just said that, my, my, what I said, my place, mine, they, you negotiate, that's what I did, I, I said, I, I, I don't have the money upfront, they think I have no problem, they'll wait till the insurance is gonna pay it, so they're doing, that's what, they're doing business around that.
I feel like it needs to be said, you know, as we're about to make multiple large expenditures for, uh, juvenile services center, we should probably be thinking about how, what are the total costs that we're gonna spend out there? Does it make sense for us to be going this alone? Should we be part of partnering with another county? Not saying they don't offer a service, but we're spending a lot of money on that.
Those are good, if you look at some, if you look at the actual caseloads, people out there and so on, you'll, you'll tend to know that. It's not a good number.
Not a good number.
What is, what is the dollar amount that you recently sent us that, I think we got it from Director Campbell, Campbell, when I asked for the profit and loss for the center?
I think, I think he provided that they received like one point eight in income, something like that.
Twenty-three was two million dollars, I just pulled up his email from October twenty-third. Twenty-twenty-three was just about two million dollars, this year so far was one point three, as of October twenty-third. But, I mean, we're still paying for all the staff out there, and our expenses exceed what we're bringing in in revenue. This is no way as a moneymaker for us.
Well, you can already see that out how my opinion was about the food part of it, though, that was just, that's, that's a joke in its own self, because we can get restaurants to bring the food into them, but I don't understand that whole philosophy. And we'll follow the criteria that they have.
So I just bring it up just because if there was ever a junction for us to reconsider what we're doing out there, now would be the time before we spend a lot more money.
But it's kinda hard to stop on a leaking roof.
It is.
And the facility is in
Yeah.
Need for a, a lot of repairs.
And it's gonna go from three hundred and eight on leaky roof to a million dollars if it does more damage.
That's right.
We need to. I can tell you guys from experience, guys, remember one thing, remember the county home.
Motion to approve out of economic development.
Second with a friendly, uh, revision to allow for half-down upon
Oh, thank you. I didn't mention that. I'm glad you mentioned it. Yes, I agree to that, to permission to prepay fifty percent down.
By Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Krunka. Any other questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You guys are gonna have to step it up a little bit. Next item is the elevator at the museum, the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, is that a service elevator? Okay, go ahead. Or is that a person? Is it freight elevator or a service elevator?
It's, it's a service.
Is that, that's not the one that we use to move the cars?
Correct, it's not the freight elevator.
But you said it's a service elevator?
Yes, it's, well, it's not.
It's a service elevator, yes.
So actually, um, I received three quotes, um, from three elevator companies, and the lowest quote, um, is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. The highest quote is a hundred and fifty-four thousand and one hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So what's wrong with the elevator?
And with, um, excuse.
So what's wrong with the elevator right now?
Actually, all of the controls, um, are obsolete. Uh, we received from Otis Elevator, who we are contracted with right now, a end-of-life, paperwork of all the parts that are obsolete, and they, they cannot repair it without doing a full modernization of the elevator.
Just so, this was like my favorite subject at work, because that was on me all the time, but just so you guys know, that putting in new stuff, they have now, before, clapboards, relays, which is, they call it clapboards. You can actually get a lot of these parts, they don't want to, to work on them anymore, as we start seeing this obsolete, I know what's going on here, but when you put in the new controls, five to seven years, that's it, and you're gonna be replacing them all again, because now they've got you. Now it's the computer program that they, or, or module they put in, and you gotta replace the whole module, you're, it is not, so it's gonna get worse before it gets better, I'm just taking this from the old systems they have.
So what is your recommendation?
Like, like you said, I, if, if they're not going to honor, to try to do the repair anymore, that's, you have no choice, but I'm just telling you, it's gonna get worse. This is, the, the stuff that they replace it in has a very short lifespan. They're stuck. Quite surprised you got three people to bid, three people to bid, so, aren't we under contract with anybody for our elevator right now?
Otis. And, and that, they were our lowest quote.
That, that's good, because they were, they're part of our programs, that's, that sounds good.
The elevator's not operational right now?
It is not. It is not operation, shonal, so.
And it's the only elevator for people?
Yes. The director there, I mean, we could, we did turn it off, we could turn it back on, but it could, we don't want anybody stuck in there, so, um, she decided to turn it off, so the lifespan of it could be a day, a week, a month.
Make a motion out of economic development.
I, can I say something?
Please.
Otis, like the other two vendors that bid, um, did a proposal for me, they also request fifty percent down. So, I would like that.
The approval to pay fifty percent.
What was the number for Otis?
A hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Change in your motion?
To one hundred and thirty-seven?
Yeah.
One thirty-seven, seven?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. So, a second? To the lower number?
The lower number is fine, with being ability to pay.
With the ability to pay.
That question, just to point that, just so we don't misunderstand, this is not a, I already know it, it's not a fifty percent down, it's material that
It's material.
So I, please don't, please, I don't want vendors all of a sudden saying, I want fifty percent down.
No, it's material.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
So, will we phrase it to be material cost?
They did use the word percent, though, um, but they also used the word material.
So we got a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Krunka. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Next item is the boiler room sprinkler repair, thirty-one thousand, five hundred.
Okay, um, I will have Angie come up here, she, um, talked with all the vendors, um, with this quote. I did receive three proposals, and the lowest one was the thirty-one, five hundred from Shamba. Um, the highest one was fifty-seven thousand, four twenty-six. The main cost in this repair is the scaffolding, um, that we have to get.
Yeah, they have to put scaffold up to reach the areas that they can't on our block.
So, for this, this, I'm gonna summarize it politely. Uh, essentially, this is a replacement of sprinklers that were inappropriately authorized to be removed, and are required to be over the mechanical room down here in the annex building, uh, to protect all that equipment that is there for the infrastructure of this building.
Correct, exactly.
So question, so what, what is it, I know it's been cut, that's fine, so what, if we repiped it, what's the, what's wrong with using the existing stuff we had? They took out the other piece of pipe, didn't they?
I was told. They did not take it out.
They did not take him out.
They cut it and capped it because there were leaks, and when the scaffold was up, the company that was here was told to just cut it and cap, and not repair the leaking pipes or the leaking sprinkler heads.
So that's my question, so, did we look into that possibility? Of reconnecting and fixing it?
That, that is.
That is reconnecting and fixing.
I thought this was brand new.
No, no.
Replacing.
They're replacing the heads and
Because they haven't been used.
Right. So if you didn't know, I'm sorry.
When was this taken out of service?
In twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, in the last two years.
Yes.
When there was a major leak.
I was shown some damage down, I think in the same room, or maybe somewhere near there, and it was access through the jail, that was, there was something that was leaking on a natural gas line, causing it to like kinda corrode.
That was, I think
Is that related to this, or is that separate?
This is different.
Separate?
Yeah, this is in the this side of the jail.
Was that issue taken care of?
Must be, didn't go up.
I don't know where of.
No.
Is that part of the?
Not sure what.
Sorry, I can't be more descriptive, I
Yeah.
I couldn't explain quite how to get to it, honestly.
Mankil.
So
You were on the tour, right?
Yes, sir.
I guess you remember.
So when you go down in the boiler room, you go through the double doors in the maintenance, there's the ramp there, so if you take a hard left, a little bit past the septic pit, there's a sprinkler riser going up there in the corner, so at some point, the lateral line coming off that protects the mechanical room, there was leaks in that line, um, no involvement with, with me whatsoever, but that line was, was deemed to be cut. So that line was cut, and then that, you no longer have protection in the mechanical room. So this work is not being performed in me, but that, that's clarification on where the area is. The pipe that we looked at, the natural gas line, was in the back forty, behind the kitchen of the sheriff, and that has not been addressed to date, no, sir.
But it does have a piece of something over it, so it keeps it from dripping all the
Yeah, I think there's like an aluminum pipe pan or something up there.
Just wanna clarify, wanna clarify.
Make sure and get ready.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Krunka, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Next item is miscellaneous outstanding bills in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Um, I am, um, changing that amount, um, because the total amount of the bills is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and six cents.
I believe those all are related to work again, performed by my two firms. Um, I have the bills here, I'm not sure if they're listed for you individually or in lump sum, but if you had questions on specific bills or want to discuss those, I have the backup information here, and I could hand it out, and I'd be happy to talk about anyone you want to address.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski. Thank you. So, um, I've talked with Andy about the situation, went over it, I, if we, we, we'll put most of it in nutshell, most of it was water damage that we had to do work around that, and so there's gonna be questions with, uh, negotiation with the, with the insurance at some point. And if we have a number that says, you know, we gotta, we have still half a million dollars, we have like two hundred and fifty, however they negotiate, a lot of this stuff's tied up with that, with that, uh, uh, that water damage. A lot of things with water damage also is that the hard pipes that were up there, the cast iron pipes, while the ceiling was down, they took the cast iron pipes, I know that we talked about that, at other meetings, and so on and so forth. It's, it's unfortunate, it's just, it, it, the hundred and eighty-eight is there, but we were holding it back for the reason of the, of the insurance. Will we be able, will we be able to take them to court and win any of this stuff? That's all to be, be determined, or what, or can we negotiate with it? It all, all to be determined.
This raises a question for Mr. DiMartino, at, at the end of the twenty-two flood, and all of the things that came after it, wha, what was the amount that we ended up paying out of pocket? Is it kinda settled yet, or?
We paid either seven or eight million.
Out of pocket?
And they paid, I, I think, I think they paid eight, and we paid seven.
Is that likely to change any, or is that pretty much the end result?
I'm not at liberty to say right now. Talk to me after December twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Christmas?
Christmas?
That's when the flood happened, right?
That was Santa's bringing?
Few years from the day of the flood?
Santa.
Maybe we paid six, and they paid eight. I don't have, I just don't have the numbers in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's close to fifty-fifty.
You're gonna save Riverboat. All right, I make a motion paid out of economic development.
Second motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenhour.
And for clarity, that's for the one eighty-six, two seventy-eight. And six pennies.
Is that half down?
No, I'm just kidding. No, sir.
It's for materials.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
If, if I may, while I'm at the podium, Cheryl asked me recently, she had the fire marshal inspection for the generators. Um, the state fire marshal is requiring something that has never been required before, um, at least in the years we've been servicing the generators. So now they wanna load bank tests in the jail for the generator, so they want a four-hour test, where I believe the first hour is thirty percent, the second hour is fifty-one percent, the third hour is tested at eighty-six percent, and the fourth hour is tested at a hundred percent load. We did work with McAllister, they provided Cheryl a quote through the Sourcewell Program, the same program that the county had used to purchase the new generator. That quote is five thousand, one hundred, fifty-five dollars and thirty cents, I believe, off memory. That'll have to be a joint effort, because McAllister will provide the load bank, but we'll have to do the D-term of the generator, the connection to the load bank, then upon completion of the four-hour test, unhook the load bank and reconnect the generator to the building, so, um, that is a requirement of the state fire marshal.
Is it, is it, is it the state fire marshal, or the jail inspection fire protect, right, right? The same, the same?
So, is that gonna be an annual?
Yes.
And what's that cost?
I, off memory, I think it was five thousand, one hundred, fifty-five dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, and he only, he only required that at the jail?
And we, I did ask Cheryl to ask him And we, I did ask Cheryl to ask him to make sure that was not required for the complex or an E nine one one unit, and he responded in writing that at this time, he's only replying here for the jail. That's correct.
Must be a black, I can see thing or something.
He's, he's, he's a peach.
I'm gonna, please note that I'm leaving at this time, I have a reason I have to go.
The records show that Mr. Rosenbaum is leaving. Thank you, so we appreciate that.
That's not a fifty fifty split between us and McAllister, so, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, Lepore County Auditor, additional appropriation for reimbursement grant, upstream CIP grant, twenty four, twenty five, supplies in amount of twelve hundred dollars, service charge in amount of twenty three thousand, four hundred. On behalf of Circuit Court. You wanna talk about that?
This is a grant, a reimbursable grant received by the Circuit Court, and in order to use it, it just needs to be appropriated first, because they'll be using public funds first.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Karanka. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate the information. Through a second? Second. Second by Mr. Keel. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Hundred percent reimbursable.
Yes, it was pre-approved, we get the grant documents, but so that they can spend it, we put it on our agenda to have it appropriated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item, we're going down to Superior Court Number Two, request an appropriation for jury pay in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
It's a transfer from one to another.
Transfer, correct.
As for, I vote motion to transfer.
It isn't a transfer, I'm sorry, it's not a transfer.
Go ahead.
It's an appropriation within the jury pay fund.
Correct, right. That's my, that's my initial money. That's my initial money, so my motion still, I'm down for the transfer.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Karanka.
Restate the motion?
Motion for transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second to the transfer.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
It's seven zero on that one, and on the previous one as well.
Correct.
Six zero.
Six zero.
Six zero.
He's not here.
Oh, just because.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, request additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development and all the other accounts, personal services, group health insurance in amount of eight hundred and twenty five thousand, ninety seven dollars and twenty five cents. The next item would be retirees' portion of the health insurance in amount of eighteen thousand, then Medicare, and then OASDI in amount of sixty seven hundred, and PERF in amount of one hundred and sixty three thousand, ninety dollars and thirty three cents.
I guess my question would be the same as this was, it came up as, did they use up these funds, and we haven't tried to reimburse those funds?
No, the only one that's negative right now is the employee portion of the great, group health insurance, because there was none appropriated last month, but all of the other ones, I don't think they're negative yet, but it's needed to get through the end of the year.
Just, okay, thank you.
Without it, we wouldn't be able to pay payroll.
I get it.
And how is PERF not calculated?
It is calculated, what do you mean?
For the, through, to get us through the end of the year, I mean.
You mean how do we come up short?
In the past, in the past, public county employees made sure the PERF was paid, that's why I'm scared.
Well, and, and, cause there's.
Put the ledger in with your packet so that you would see the numbers, but.
There's a hundred and sixty three thousand there, and then the next line item is, is we're asking for eighteen thousand some dollars.
That's in Lit Public Safety, so two different things.
So, I, I get that, but how is it that we do not budget, I mean, basic things like Medicare, PERF, and everything else, and if we hire, let's say if we hired twenty five more employees this year than we did last year, for some reason, some point through the year, when these people come on, that, that, we, there should be an up, we should be dealing with this, it comes, not as it slams at the end of the year, is what. And I, we hired that many more employees this year, that, I mean, cause if I'm not mistaken, this was, this was on our agenda last month.
I'm not mistaken, we had hiring freeze.
It was, the numbers have been looked at more closely, and payroll gave us, they looked at it more closely, so these are updated numbers.
They reduced it, cause I think it was three hundred thousand last month.
Yeah.
If you recall, in twenty twenty three, when we were doing the budget, we bumped up the amounts for Medicare, OASDI, and maybe PERF, did we do PERF?
I don't know.
But I don't know that it was actually, it was just a round number that we bumped it up, it wasn't based off of any analysis, we just knew it was too low.
Yes.
I mean, a safe thing to do, at least for PERF, is, isn't it three percent across all the salaries?
It was eleven percent.
That's the, that's the.
We contribute three percent.
Right.
Eleven point, every year for eleven point four percent.
All right.
No, the budgets are all in the.
Do we know if this is corrected for, for next year's budget, or are we gonna run it short again?
I assume you'd run up short, because no, nothing, I don't think anything was changed in the budget for the Commissioner's budget, if I'm not mistaken.
So, is this because we, because I think the insurance thing, didn't Carl Sender say that we had like fifty more employees than we did the previous year, or fifty employees were added, does anybody else?
That wasn't Carl, that was Craig Menney, said the census was higher.
Carl came in and said that too, because you had him come in and look at it.
Right.
Carl did.
It might have been Craig, I mean, it was at the same meeting, yeah. So, how do we, at what point did we approve extra employees, one?
One, that's what I asked you to go.
But extra employees, where they didn't come and say, we've got an extra employee, this is what it's gonna cost to fund that person for the year. What, what, when did we ever do that?
Usually it's extra employees, I think it's extra folks in the plant.
Not on PERF, PERF has nothing to.
Oh, PERF, okay, I was talking, health insurance.
I will say.
Medicare has nothing to do with that.
I brought up last month too, though, it's historical that a few of these do go negative, and without your approval, past offices have just taken the money from general fund and correcting it, so you wouldn't have been aware of it. One reason why general fund was so low, but that's how they've corrected it, where you've never, you've, you've never been made aware of it, so this is the first time you're probably being.
Unilaterally appropriated money?
I'm sorry?
You mean they just unilaterally appropriated money?
They transferred money from the general fund to pay any negative accounts, which is what they've done for Lads in the past, which we may have to do this time, unless we let it go negative, but yes, exactly.
I think some of this might stem from back in twenty two, when the raises were given, the, the ten percent raises, or, or more for some departments. I don't think PERF was calculated, or some of these other withholdings were calculated.
Right, I don't think it calculated, because the auditors got it in to calculate that.
So, because they were left off in the twenty three budget, there was an issue then?
I think we found that at the end of the year last year, no one had been watching it, because it was in the Commissioner's budget, so it's really never been tracked thoroughly.
Which has been brought up before, why do the Commissioners have this when they're not watching it? No offense to them, it's just, it doesn't make sense for it to be in that department.
Yeah, and I think that it just was never thought of to look at, I assume, in the auditor, since it's not in their budget.
Payroll, who's, who's the one watching it?
Payroll doesn't do anything with the budget, so they wouldn't see that.
You, you brought that up extensively at the budget hearings, I think, and I think it was a worthwhile discussion, and we, we agreed with your notion it should be under the auditor, whoever the auditor is. So.
I'm not getting a motion out of you two.
Any, okay, so, long and short of it is, the only way to make paychecks whole is to make this appropriation, so, motion to approve out of economic, economic development lit.
For all of them? You might as well go to the next.
Might as well take it for.
Take it all the way down.
Way down, so it's gonna be the total of eight twenty five, ninety seven, and twenty five cents, eighteen thousand, twenty four hundred and fifty dollars, sixty seven hundred, one sixty three, ninety three, three.
Got this engineer to do it on your head.
Yeah, right, there you go, eighty eight, sixty one, and sixty nine cents, two thousand, sixty eight dollars and sixty eight cents, and finally, eighteen thousand, seventy four, and forty three cents. That whole lump to come out of economic development lit.
And lit economic, the second batch, I can explain a little bit better, because it started while I was here, but the problem with Lit Public Safety is the departments have, who have, pay, who are paying out of it, they change employees. So, some might be paid more money, some might be paid less money, like, for example, the one that you saw that was moved, tonight you approved something to move five thousand dollars from the jail to the courthouse. So, if that employee hadn't been paid out of lit in the jail, it would have totally made Lit Public Safety for the courthouse be underpaid. We got lucky that he was paid from lit the first time, so when you move people around like that, it doesn't change the budget in Lit Public Safety, but it has to be paid. So, those are, and the individual departments do not watch those funds, which I let, I sent it out to them this year to let them know, it's hopefully be better next year. But, the changes that come through that when an employee leaves, it really affects.
Going back to the.
So I have a motion by Mr. Karanka.
I'll second.
And going back to the motion second, just for your information, we roughly calculate, with this passing, if it does, that's the aggregate amount of the amount taken out Lit Public Safety nights, rough, tonight is roughly two point four million.
Lit Economic Development, sorry.
So there's a motion with.
Avenue that already.
Justin?
Yeah, seconded, okay.
Justin, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I would have, I would have nayed, but it'd have failed, so I'll, I'll stay as a yea, so. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not happy with it at one, at all.
No, not any one of us.
Well, the whole thing is the PERF, the PERF thing is, I get that, you know, we had a shortfall in insurance and things like that.
Mr. President, Mr. Larry would like to inform about the water loss, the new water loss, when you get a chance.
I'll get to you. Next on the agenda, Larry? See how that works?
Good evening, Council, Larry Levendowsk, Lepore County Project Manager, I just wanna give you a little update, so the, the water loss that we have going on right now in the jail, it occurred on the fourth floor, right above the jail cell, north, north jail cells in the shower area, it's a heating line, it's one of the supply lines that feeds over, and it also, it feeds portion of the fifth, the fourth, and the third floor cells, okay? So what happened is, it's a black iron pipe, it's actually split right down for, we could see about three feet of it is split, it's corroded, so it's rusted all the way through, is what's happened. We had, we did get it isolated, so the water was able to stop up top, in order to get to it, we had to open up the ceiling in one of the secured halls, and then we broke out a block wall to, above to get to it. It's the only way we could access it right there, but we did it in a way that it's in a secured area where you couldn't, couldn't affect any of the inmates.
Is it gonna affect the hot water to the inmates?
It's gonna affect the heating right now. The heating, the.
This is a heating line?
It's a heating line right now, so, we've, we've got it, working with maintenance, we were able to control it, we've got it kinda balanced out right now, the unit is staying steady, but we've, like I said, we were able to isolate that sub-portion of the system right now. With it, we were able to find that two of the gate valves up there, in order to shut that system down, failed. We could, they, they, we got them to partially close, and then they just start bleeding through, so, with it, it's gonna require to pretty much cut the complete heating system on the whole jail down, in order to get this system fixed.
So, it's gonna be fifteen degrees this weekend?
That's exactly.
So, are, are you saying that, when you say cut the whole system down, are you talking about a day or two, or?
When we, once we get the material, you're gonna have to shut this system down, and you're gonna stay on it whatever it takes to get this thing going.
Aside from the area where you have to work, is there damage in other places?
There's damage in, in booking, so, we were able to isolate, I hadn't gotten that. We, we had electricians, we isolated all electrical that was getting waterlogged, so we pulled those units down, we isolated it to make it safe, so that in the booking area, there's no threat of electrical issues with them, and then I had the guys, we took down some areas of the ceiling, it's all plaster ceiling, it was starting to come loose from the above. We got that tidied up, we got the ceiling, the drop area, we pulled everything that's wet down, and we've tried to get it so it's safe for them to actually use bookings at this point.
What's the distance between the two valves? I mean, how, how long are you talking?
We're talking.
Span.
The span, the, the valves, there's only one set of valves on there, and it goes to the heating lines, so, once you shut that down, it's on a riser, there are, there's only one set of valves off of that riser.
So, so it's not?
It's a return and a supply.
Okay.
And it, and it loops right down to your units and loops back, so, the distance of pipe, pipe, it's over the top of the cell, so, there's no way to access the whole line, unless we were able to move the whole wall, so, looking at, we're gonna have to come up with a way of moving it out from above those cells, and run two new lines all the way back to the secured back hall.
So, and this, was this installed when we, when we redid the jail?
No, this looks like it's original line, Mr. Yagowski, it really, it was.
It's on the lower floor?
First floor? It's on, it's on the fourth floor.
Fourth floor.
It's on the fourth floor. Yeah, this is, this is behind the original walls, above everything, this looks like original lines.
Cause that, that kind of split, I've seen your picture, it's not abnormal for cast iron, if you get to somebody, it doesn't necessarily mean all the pipes are bad in the world, but, but unfortunately, there's not much you can do, but cut back further than.
It was one of the worst spots.
Worst spots, right.
Is, is this with the water, I mean, how much water flowed that, is this something that we need to notify the insurance carrier? I mean, does it?
He doesn't have it for dead yet.
Oh. The water was running for several hours.
Yeah.
We couldn't get it shut off, because the valves wouldn't close.
Did it go?
It came from the fourth floor, down the chase, to the first floor booking for hours.
Does it close the, does that lot of hot water set?
Block?
Yeah.
Groups and stuff, you know what I'm saying?
Boring rooms, twelve by twelve tile on the floor.
So, each floor's got a separate, like on this, this line, when you pull it, it's feeding like three cells on, on four, three cells on five, and three cells, so it, that heating line is feeding a certain, and there's another loop that feeds a certain other, so, it's feeding.
So it's got its own circulating pump, it circulates it out in the hot water.
We understand this is not the appropriate meeting, but our main concern with airing this out is so the Commissioners could work with the Council, because as Mr. DiMartino, whether cold weather's coming, we haven't done enough investigation yet, we just got the water stopped, but we believe that new laterals might have to come from the basement where the valves are, new valves all the way up, then be surface mounted, and then enclosed, so, the Commissioners will.
President, I can make a motion that you act upon the Council's best advice for the vote with the emergency, emergency meeting that's gonna happen.
In case we have to have an emergency.
We don't have that one, you can go.
No, what I'm saying, declaring.
Yes, declare, right.
And encourage it.
Authorization too.
All right.
By Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr.
I'd encourage like a friendly amendment to just keep us in the loop too, which I trust that you'll do, but like, as part of it, it should be.
He always hasn't passed, so I'm relying on Randy.
If it's decided, if that's the, the plan forward.
It's up to the Commissioners.
Yeah, and the Commissioners decide to engage us, we'd be happy to honor that motion, send out a group email with updates with the Commissioners' approval, and keep everybody in the loop, if they should decide so.
I'm sure the Commissioners, I know she, she was in there earlier, but I'm sure they're gonna be right on top of it, so.
Do you mind restating that? We didn't get it, if there's something we need to do.
Just that, if, if the President needs to authorize to do an emergency declaration with the Commissioners, on behalf of the Council.
We just wanna make sure we didn't miss.
We're not gonna just have another meeting for it, so, yeah.
I would also add, just.
And to keep everybody.
Friendly reminder, right, sorry. I would also add that, and this is gonna elicit some groans, but since we're at the onset of this, the second step after the declaration of the emergency is to invite at least two bids for this process.
Commissioner's responsibility.
So you're telling the Commissioner?
No, no, we're not going to, that's not part of the process.
First of all, if.
I'm not making a part of the motion.
I trust that Mr. DiMartino will.
I'm gonna go to the meeting.
Advice.
But I'm not gonna, that's not part of my motion, just a part, that you shared the information with the Council, please.
Any other questions or comments on that?
I do have a comment. In a situation like this, I'm very thankful that we have local people that are working on this, rather than calling South Bend or Chicago, or come on here. You know, we, it's easy to talk about a bid after the fact, but the fact that, number one, Andy and Larry and Scott, these guys already know our facilities, we could bring in a team from South Bend or Indianapolis, and it'd take them hours to even figure out where to start, so I think we have to, you know, I know, Andy's taking some flak, but there's a lot to be said for a local dealer that you trust.
I agree, I, I appreciate that the work that you guys are able to do, especially the quick response, I, I think my, my point of bringing this up is that this could lead to a lot of other projects that may not need to be done immediately. There's, there's the immediate risk that has to be mitigated to prevent additional damage from happening, and then there's all of the rest of the work that happens after, that doesn't need to be done right away, and that's the part. And that's the part where the competitive purchasing and bidding statute plays into this. So that's why I bring it up.
I'll pass that on to the commissioners.
Thank you for.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Happy Thanksgiving if we don't see everybody. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Any other?
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
I think I had a chance to share with everybody. So yes, we did get hacked into the computer. I apologize to the Port County residents that, to see what they seen. We, we got on the meeting. There'll be some more information to happen. Somebody got, when they share something, somebody got on the share part. We, there's a, we, we believe we might be able to find it. They're going to have to go into this computer and analyze the information. But there was a person connected as Joseph, and he's the person that did it. So we, we need to find out whoever Joseph is, but we're early in the stages right now. Our, our IT person was very, very upset because it happened to his watch. We let him go home because he, he had a hard time with it.
That was, had to be some of the most graphic stuff I think I've ever seen.
But, yeah, I just, I just want to point out that he, he took it a hardest job, so.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
A quick comment passed along, again, a message. This comes from Aaron Russ, chief of the La Crosse Volunteer Fire Department, asking that, repeat his message. Thank you for your continued support of all volunteer firefighters departments in La Porte County. With your generous assistance with ARP funds, the Volunteer Fire Department will be putting the thirty thousand dollars over the next two years towards purchase of a new light rescue truck. This wouldn't be possible for, for us to obtain without your continued support. Aaron Russ, chief.
I got that same text message. I appreciate you reading that.
That brings something up. Mr. Novak, I'm going to put something on your list to do. I'll get you the contracts, but you're going to have to get them all signed by the end of the year.
By the end of.
So the money's obligated.
We'll call a meeting, and then I'll have Chief Snyder do it just so there's no.
Whoever, whoever does it.
Yep.
Thank you. Any, one last thing about that fire that happened in Michigan City, all the cooperation between the Pines, the Ford County, Porter County, with volunteers, with, with staff of Michigan City and so on and so, Westville, I name all of them, but what an excellent job that they, they didn't cause a major catastrophe if it was out there.
Definitely. Mr. Cunningham?
I'd like to thank the council members for their prayers for my wife as she was operated on out of the hospital and county employees as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keel?
I wanted to comment on, I think tonight marks a transition for us as it relates to finances in that we've moved from doing a lot of our additional appropriations down of ARP, which was a one-time source of funding, you know, not reoccurring income, and we've now transitioned into lit economic development. As we heard earlier, that amount was over almost two point four million dollars. From perspective, my impression is that typically lit economic development has about a surplus of a million dollars a year that was kind of building up, some years, maybe more, sometimes less. We're now spending more than what we were saving. This is a completely unsustainable trend. We don't have ARP to resort back to. We're almost down on money in wind tax. We're almost down on money in riverboat, and our options are getting smaller. Last month, we did a motion, there was a motion put forward to do a, you know, vote of no confidence. Now I think we need to do something about it. If we're, if we're worried about this, we need to do something, and I would encourage us to either set up several more meetings to sort that out, perhaps create a committee, think about a consultant. But, but doing nothing is not gonna, gonna get us anywhere.
The thing is, we need, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but we need to make sure that the, the budget is accurate because having shortfalls on things as simple as, as perf that should, should be, and I'm not, this isn't, I'm not throwing a jab at anybody, but I don't understand how at the end of the year, we can be short. I don't care if it's in the commissioner's budget or it's not. You got X number of employees and you got certain ones that get perf, obviously full-time employees or elected officials and everybody else. But I mean, the first four or five years I was on the council, the county never paid into my perf because I was still employed by the city. You can't play, pay into two persons at the same time. So, but, but there, this is a, this is a simple thing. So if we can't fix the simple little thing, how the heck are we ever going to have a budget that we can do? But we need to start immediately first of the year, I agree with you, and start scrutinizing to make sure that everything is in there.
I don't think we want to wait that long. I mean, when we say that the budget is, is problematic and that we're bothered by it, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, this is our budget. We sign our names to it.
But we're, we're not the one adding the numbers and going, there's X number of employees. We're going to add this, to this, and we're going to come up with that number. That's, that's not our job.
That may be so, but we absolutely have the ability to hire consultants to help us with it or get information from the auditor's office to help us make those decisions.
I don't have a problem hiring, if we bring in, we brought in Carl to look at the insurance, if we bring in Bigger Tilly, whoever we need to help, I don't have a problem.
We, we have, we will get it, we will get an answer to you. We understand you want to answer for that question. We're going to look into that, the perf, and we appreciate that. But we have, let me just say this quite please, very quick. We have tried to focus on the big picture where it's important with regard to what he's talking about, the councilman Keel's talking about, which is, we have encouraged you, and we still encourage you, do not let the highway department blow through lit economic development. Have them use the major moves monies so that we have more left. That's like a big picture like.
I get that.
Type of.
Once soon as we blow through that, we blow through. So I mean, that's, that buys us a small amount of time.
It buys a lot of time. Five million dollars is a lot of money.
Well.
You're talking about a hundred and thirty-seven.
That's two meetings if we have another one like tonight. This, we got caught with our, lack of a better expression.
Now, don't say that because we just saw that. Say nothing about your pants.
Appreciate you saying that. We got caught, we got caught.
Flat.
Blindside, flat footed at the end of the year with the insurance so drastically under budgeted and, and everything else and the, the perf and all these different things, the bills for maintenance and no, no offense to Cheryl and, and her people and Angie for what they're doing, but they were left with just that, just like out at the animal shelter, you know? People come and people go, and some of them don't always leave us in the best position.
Make a thing of water damage. We have individuals that are causing as much problems as the water damage.
Right. It didn't help with the huge flood, that's for sure.
But that, that, you know, so the two things that I think I'm fired next month, so I'm, the two things you really have to look at is you have to look at the buildings because that, that's the problem. We, we have these emergencies just because for so many years, people are just kicking the can down the road. You know, we have the air conditioning issue that's going to right with his head come next summer. And, and the health insurance. You can't have health insurance premium that's twenty percent of your salary, of, of your budget, of, of your general budget. It's close to twenty percent. It's, it's just not sustainable.
And not fully funded?
It's not sustainable. So, I mean, those are the two things.
So I'll be closed by saying, as we all drive home tonight, we should be thinking about what actual steps, and it's not going to be one thing. It's going to be a lot of different things that we're going to take and how we're going to divvy up those responsibilities and who's going to do them.
I've already asked, I've already asked it for questions to be answered. My part's done.
If you don't mind me adding, if you don't mind me adding, but I noticed another, other counties do, there's what's called the Form One, I think it is. And historically, we fill that out in research. So pick a, pick a department, but let's say it's the auditor's office and we're not the auditors. We're going through saying, okay, this is about what they take in. This is about what they put out. You know, we, what other counties do is they give that form to each department. So then the departments let them know, how much are you going to need overall in OASDI, even though it's from, you know, commissioner's budget, but it will cover OASDI, perf, all of those things, including their revenue. I know I spoke with the department this year about something and about their revenue, and they're like, I don't know what I take in. Because the auditor's office has always done it for them, I don't know that they even think about it or need to worry about it. To where having them help with that Form One may help keep it more accurate instead of one person trying to figure out forty departments.
Yep, Mr. Cunningham.
I don't want to mislead people by saying that we're blindsided here at the last, in the last month. You remember back in February when Mr. Yagowski and I started voting, no, we told you it was unsustainable, because he started in two thousand or two thousand and one. My first year was in two thousand and six, seven. The bottom line was, nobody ever came back in February and asked for additional appropriations. And it was just, we knew as soon as it happened, when the department hasn't got additional appropriations in February, it was going to get worse in March.
Yep.
And where are we at now?
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. My thing is, is with these big.
Well, absolutely.
That all of those should be, we should be getting some kind of a notice halfway through the quarter through the year going, hey, here's where we're at. This is what's coming in. These are the bills that are coming in. This is how much is left in the fund. This isn't going to make it. There needs to be some projections there, so.
One of the, I mentioned it last time with the AAC. I know how it's going to, I know how it's going to be misrepresented by the public because it, it will, but again, the only way that they're going to give us money, our state representatives, is if we impose all of our taxes that they think is right. One being a real tax, just saying. I am not here to tell you that we should have real tax, but I'm telling you, we will not get any more appropriations until we use up all of it. You can talk to any one of your representatives. They're going to give you the same answer this gave you. That's the reality of it. Now, out there, the public's going to take this thing and go, well, Mark wants to raise taxes, Marshall wants this. That's, I did not say that, but I know how it's going to be misconstrued. This is our state legislatures that through this, I know you made a big. This is what we got to worry about because they already got us, no word like that. They already have us, our hands tied. They've already told us that. And they're not, they're not ashamed to say it.
And, and the thing is, is their big thing down in Indianapolis right now is we're going to cut property taxes.
Yes.
We're going to cut, we're going to do, we're taking care of that. We're cutting this, we're cutting that and saving you money. Now, they got two billion in the bank or whatever it is.
Yep.
And then they're, they're turning around telling us, but we're giving you the tools to do it locally.
Yes.
Because, yeah, because it's coming to you, because you go down Indianapolis a lot. I can turn and look at other people, but that's exactly what they're doing. So they're not saying. Eliminating, they're just, they're just, they're, they're putting it on the local governments to continue with that.
What they, what they looking for, I mentioned to you, is a Florida-type system. They want us to, to pay for your roads, to be tow roads, so on and so forth, but you know, we don't have the services like Florida does where they can do tow roads. We have one or two major roads, two major roads that go both north and southeast and west. That, that they could probably possibly do tow, but that's it. So there's not the tools, but they want us to be a Florida-type state. That's what they're, that's what they're gearing for. And they're going to be the good guys. We're going to be the bad guys.
Absolutely. Don't forget the unfunded mandates.
Right.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but also I agree with, going back to the conversation, I agree with everybody tonight with what was said, and I think the point brought up about a financial advisor might be a good idea to, to look into something like that. I know it worked with the sheriff's department when I was on, with our pension, when I was sheriff and we got a financial advisor, and he really helped us a lot. And he's still there, and I think if Sheriff Heed was here, he'd agree that he was a very.
I wish he changed.
Was very important to do something like that.
Change the law so we could do exactly what you're saying, though. All right.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Is there anything else? Motion adjourned. Second? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.